We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So before we start today, I would like to just make a few comments about our meeting today and how we're going to proceed. We have a lot to cover, so we're going to want to move pretty efficiently and stay on task as much as possible. We do have some public participation rules. We established these last year. We usually don't have to deal with them too much, but just because obviously budget is a matter of special interest. We have a lot of people who may want to speak. So I just want to kind of revisit them very quickly. The main thing is just to observe meeting decorum, right? We want to be polite, respectful, and to keep order. The Chair manages the meeting. We'll call on you generally to be a manager in the public speech. She'll do around Robin. And then we'll ask him again at the end if anybody has anything to add. Okay. We only allow public speaking and comment during the agenda items for public speaking. So that's important to remember. As I mentioned a little bit earlier before we started the meeting, we have two different spots in the agenda where we allow public speaking. So you can speak at either or both of those. Generally, we do try to observe about a two-minute time limit. If there's going to be a lot of people, try to keep your comments succinct. But we want everybody to be able to express themselves. If there's, you know, we'll try to observe a reasonable time limit. If you run it a little long, I might ask you to give it somebody else an opportunity to speak, and we'll come back to you during that session. I don't want everybody to be cut off unnecessarily, but we do want to make sure that everybody has a chance when we move this along. Okay. In the interest of efficiency, try to avoid restating something that somebody's already said. We've heard it in meetings before and, you know, it's important that you state your position. But if you can do it by saying, hey, I really support what that person said about the budget, this budget aspect, something like that, that just helps everybody without spending a lot of extra time. So I think that's really about it in terms of kind of the public participation rules. Just, you know, that's just common sense for the most part. The second thing I'd like to kind of talk about is really about the purpose of this meeting. So we have a regular, it's a regular meeting, regular Board of Finance meeting. We have our agenda. It's been published. Hopefully, all have it or been able to see it. We have a lot to cover in addition to just having a presentation of the Andover Elementary School's school budget, which is kind of the highlight and is going to kick off this budget season for us on the Board of Finance. Okay, so the purpose of this presentation and today's meeting, this agenda item, is really to learn about this proposed budget. We want to understand the philosophy and approach of the administration and the Board of Education and for the Board of Finance to members to ask questions and really learn more about this. Nothing is going to be decided here tonight. This is mainly fact-finding at this time. So we just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. We just want to treat that as such. We'll keep an open mind on how we're going to approach this. And again, we're early in this process. We, you know, we still have plenty of, plenty of work to do on this. So we may well have to come back for more information, more clarification, some suggestions, whatever. So just wanted to make that point that we got a long way to go, and this is just the start. Okay. So that being said, I'd like to go ahead and open the meeting to public speak. Item number two, Amanda, do you want to go around?
Totally. So we are going to go one by one, and we will kick it off with Celeste Willard. And as you are called on to speak, just unmute yourself and then remute yourself after. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Thank you, Board of Finance, and thank you, everybody, for joining. My name is Celeste Willard, and I am the Andover Elementary School Parent Teacher Association co-president. And I am here tonight to fully support on behalf of the PTA and families in the community. I would like to offer our full support of the proposed budget from our superintendent, Ms. Bruno. As you know, the elementary school has not saw a budget increase in the last six years. And in doing so, the school has, is functioning in a bare-bones capacity, specifically in staff and in other resources. We recognize that the enrollment may not be increasing, but costs for providing a quality education are. If we have learned nothing else during this past year, we have seen how critical a well-functioning school system is for our children, for our families, and for our communities. We applaud our school community for working very hard to determine a responsible budget that is fit to properly operate a quality school for our community. The following families echo this statement. And those families are, if I may, the Blake family, the Rickert family, the Moreno family, the Foren family, the Wilson family, the Kelquist family, the Soloway family, the Warner family, the Gold family, the Godwin family, the Allard family, the Glowacki family, the Lewis family, the Chalfont family, the Martel family, the Clayton family, the Morse family, the Kloszuski family, the Patrice family, the McCarthy family, the Landry family, and last but not least, the Willer family. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Celeste.
Thank you, Celeste. And also, as we go on, I want to point out something that's a little different with doing Zoom is that you don't have the opportunity to physically hand in your public speak if you so choose. So if you'd like, I just wanted to offer for anyone to submit it via email to me during the meeting. My email is admin@andoverct, and I will also write it in the chat. Okay, so next up, we have Dan Foreign.
Hello, everyone. Dan Foreign, 68 Stanley Drive. Thank you, Board of Finance. So as a member of the Andover community, I'm proud to support the budget that the Board of Education has put forth. As a Board of Education member, I was more than happy to vote in a favor and move this budget forward. More importantly, as a taxpayer and a parent, I fully support this budget. This was a difficult budget to work on, taking consideration of the financial impact that pandemic has put on our taxpayers and the effect that the pandemic has on our educational system. A lot of work was done behind the scenes about the added expenses of what could be cut and what was unnecessary to properly educate our children. I think what is important to realize is that we listen to the experts. As in everything, you have to look at facts and trends, studies, and opinions of the experts. Superintendent Bruno, Principal Brighty, and our educators are those experts. They know what is required to properly educate our children and operate a school. This is a budget that is fiscally responsible, but more importantly, puts our children's education and future at the forefront. In a normal, non-pandemic year, we have always invested in our children's education and have always done what's right for Andover Elementary School. This shows in our test scores from years past. Andover is one of the highest performing schools in the state. Now, we are in our second year of a pandemic. Last year, our children's school was cut short by almost half a year. The administration at that time scrambled, like other school districts, to come up with distance learning. They did their best they could with what they had during an unprecedented time. It was a struggle for all, from the administration to our teachers, parents, and a status of all our children. Children continue to struggle academically and emotionally. Thankfully, Andover Elementary School has done a great job at getting our kids back to school in person safely from day one of this academic year. Thankfully, we have a superintendent who specializes in special education. So she recognizes how these are learning gaps can affect our children in the future. This brings me to one of the controversial issues, which in my opinion should not be controversial, kindergarten class size. Kindergarten and third grade are very important years in early childhood education. There's a very high possibility that some of these children coming into kindergarten are behind and/or have not had any pre-kindergarten education. This pandemic has set children back socially and academically. It's important to get these children caught up and recognized. Any learning disabilities is important to recognize these needs early so that it does not cost us more in the future. This brings me to another point of investment. I know there's a concern in town about the failure to invest in infrastructure from years past. Now that has caught up with us. We have crumbling bridges, roads, and other infrastructure. Though it is more costly now to play catch-up, at least we have the ability to repair these things. Like infrastructure, when it comes to education, a failure to invest early results in a failure later. However, unlike infrastructure, education cannot be replaced down the road when it fails. These early years are building blocks to our children's future and the future of our town, our country, and our world. As a taxpayer and a father of four, I hope the Board of Finance supports the Board of Education's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan. For those of you that know, Dan's also on the Board of Education. We appreciate your input, so.
Thanks, Dan. Chris Bernard?
Good evening. Chris Bernard addresses 58 Merritt Valley Road, and I am speaking as a member of the Board of Education. I support the proposed AES budget, not only because of the hard work of the school administration and my fellow Board of Education members, but because it's a prudent course of action. For a bit of background on myself, I hold a Doctor of Education degree in Educational Leadership. My dissertation was on how ideology and pedagogy impact the adoption of technology in the classroom. While my dissertation was centered on technology use, it was, of course, important to understand the historical past and significance of pedagogy, something that we have all experienced. As we discuss the proposed Board of Education budget, one item I would like everyone to keep in mind is the ever-changing role of education in society. Many of us were educated for a very different world than what we live in now. As part of the Industrial Revolution, the 18th, 19th centuries, many of us were educated in some very formalized and standardized ways that continue to this day, with the primary goal of the education system to be creating a standardized worker for factories and labor. The standardized approach to education led to larger class sizes and more efficiencies. But as it targeted the average student, it often failed to serve the vast majority of students in the best way possible. Those students who did not fit the mold simply never reached their potential. This, of course, includes students both above and below the average. As our nation has changed from an industrial economy to a service and knowledge-based economy, so must our education. To do so means we must change how we teach and interact with students, moving from the sage on stage to the guide on the side, especially in the more formative years of schooling. This means increased interaction with students, leading to smaller class sizes. We have seen firsthand the impact of not investing in our future. We hear regularly about the ever-increasing cost to repair roads and infrastructure that have not been maintained over the years. Roads and buildings can be repaired. Our children cannot. Same as Dan said. By the way, we did not coordinate that at all. I understand the concern and recognize the challenge of trying to meet the needs of all members of our community, and the daunting task before the Board of Finance, Board of Selectment, and the community as a whole, and look forward to working together and meeting the needs of all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next, we have Ann Creme and Jerry Creme.
I'd like to thank you for having us share our feelings and our ideas. I gave a lot of thought to what I was going to say. I concur with the people from the Board of Ed who have already spoken, but I brought this, I wrote this from a different perspective. I live at Ainwood Fern Way. This evening, I'm speaking as a senior citizen resident of this town and not just as a Board of Ed member. My wife, Ann, and I bought our building lot in 2004, built our home in 2005, and we moved in. We had never heard of Andover, and most people we spoke with had never heard of Andover either. Generally speaking, people still have never heard of Andover. We love that about this town. Rural nature, uncrowded, no traffic. It's a great place to live. We love it here. It all comes with a price. That's become a problem I will address. We had planned to retire, grow old, and stay in this town. There are times I wonder if we will be able to afford it. Ever since we have lived here, there has been an annual problem, argument, discussion, whatever you want to call it. It is the budget. I would like to call it an opportunity. Our town has needs that must be funded in order to operate and function. Roads, bridges, fire equipment, public works vehicles, resident state trooper, all employees who work for the town, and the list goes on. We also have an exceptional and top-performing elementary school that must be funded as well if we are to educate the youngest of our residents and prepare them for our future. As citizens of Andover, we have a responsibility as well as an obligation to fund the needs, not the wants, but the needs of this town. We cannot continue to kick the can down the street and not fund the things that need to be funded. I've lived in Weathersfield, Newington, and West Hartford. I owned a business in West Hartford for 18 years and worked as a teacher in South Windsor for 17 years. I've never experienced the arguments and disagreements over budget that I've seen in Andover, year after year. No one anywhere wants to pay higher taxes. As a senior citizen on a fixed income, paying more becomes more difficult for us. But as a resident, I know that I have a responsibility to my town and its residents. My daughter went through the West Hartford Public School System K to 12. We moved to West Hartford because it had an outstanding school district. It had all the services and amenities as well. Catherine received the top-rated education that has served her well as an adult. I'm thankful to the residents of West Hartford who paid taxes to support our education and all the amenities that the town had to offer. Whenever there was a school budget referendum, residents, including my family, always voted yes to support the school district. I taught in South Windsor for 17 years. We had an awesome school district that was always at the forefront in terms of curriculum, teaching, and learning. As a teacher in South Windsor, we were given all that we needed to provide the best possible education for our students. The residents of South Windsor voted in favor of a remodeled high school and middle school. They are finishing up the building of four new elementary schools. People in South Windsor placed a premium value on education. In Andover, we do not have tennis courts, golf courses, swimming pools, ice skating rinks, trash collection, parks, the list goes on. One of the greatest value that we do have in Andover is our school, Andover Elementary School. When one teacher from South Windsor heard that we were moving to Andover, her first words were, "Andover has a school to die for. It is the crown jewel of our rural town." How do all of these other towns do all of this and keep their taxes reasonable? In order to have enough revenue, you have to be able to pay for education and all the other needs of the town. You really have only two choices. One, raise taxes on the residents. Two, encourage commercial development and growth of business and industry. West Hartford and South Windsor have made an art form of commercial development. Why can't Andover at least try to compete? We have all of Route 6, but all the commercial development is down on Route 44. It bypasses us. It is obvious, but not easy. We're going to have to actively pursue commercial development in Andover. We can't keep up with our town needs and our Andover Elementary School needs by just raising mill rates. We can't keep putting off that which needs to be done. We have to support our town and our school. Costs will continue to rise. As taxpayers, we have to take care of our small town and our Andover Elementary School. How are we going to continue to fund our future needs? Because my hope that commercial development is at the top of our list to increase revenue. We can't keep putting all of the responsibility on the residents and taxpayers of Andover. Until we bring business and industry to Andover, our residents will have sole responsibility of funding our town and school budgets. My sincere thank you to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectment, and Board of Education for all of your hard work and contributions to the town of Andover. Thank you for being good stewards of our revenue and resources. I also want to thank all of the town and school employees for all you do to make Andover the community that it is. Please know that we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. We're going to have to keep the comments to a little less time, everyone. I don't mean disrespect to anybody, but we can't, we just don't have the time to allot for five or six minutes for everybody. So I'm going to have to, you know, Jerry, Dan, everyone on the Board of Finance, I'm giving a little leeway here. I understand the Board of Education, rather, members. I appreciate the input. I think it's important. But I will have to ask most people to keep to a shorter limit, okay, so we can move on. Thanks, Amanda. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate the work that you guys do as well.
Thanks, Jerry. Ann, did you want to purchase B? Okay, thank you. Jenny Morrell?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Loudon?
Well, of course. So first of all, thank you very much to the Board of Finance for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will try to get it in under two minutes mark. Real quickly, as the Chair of the Andover Board of Education, I'm speaking in support of our budget, with which it will be presented tonight by Superintendent Bruno. In addition to all that I said in my letter to you from last Friday, I want you to know the following. I concur with Jerry Creme and believe that Andover Elementary School is Andover's greatest asset. And I have worked for five and a half years to help keep it that way. Expenses increase every year, and it therefore costs more simply to maintain what we already have in our personnel and our facility. Seventy-five percent of our total budget is to pay for our dedicated employees whose tremendous efforts along with the support of parents and families have given our students the gift of 25 straight weeks of face-to-face learning since September, other than seven pre-planned remote learning days around Thanksgiving that helped to keep COVID out of our school building. This is the first time during my tenure on the Board of Education that we've requested a budget increase. And I can assure you that the Board of Education thoroughly scrutinized the budget that you are being presented with this evening, and we cut $74,000 from what Superintendent Bruno initially proposed to us in January. We only can assess our budgetary requirements based upon what our expert, Superintendent Bruno, tells us our Andover Elementary Schools' needs, and not in comparison to what other towns spend on their students. It simply costs more per student to educate a smaller student population. Andover Elementary School is in the top 10% of schools in Connecticut, and we want to keep it that way. I hope that the Board of Finance will support the Board of Education's proposed budget as it has been submitted to you this evening. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thanks, Shannon. Paula King?
I'm just listening to everybody's thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott? Scott, you have a purple screen there. Would you like to participate in public speak?
No, thank you, Amanda.
Oh, Scott Person. Thank you. Next up, we have Boris iPad. If you could just state your first and last name?
Hi, Erin Boris, Dogwood Drive. I just want to be short and sweet, but I do fully support Superintendent Bruno's budget. I just also like to highlight the fact that our school was recently featured on a local news channel for the exemplary work being done to mitigate risk while keeping our children in school. Wouldn't it be wonderful, really, for Andover Elementary to continue to get the accolades it deserves and be an example to surrounding communities of how we take care of our students and our teachers and staff? My hope is that the budget will be supported by the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Lutuska?
Yes. Hi, my name is Melissa Lutuska. I am a teacher at Andover Elementary School, and I am going to speak on behalf of the Andover Education Association. We would like to speak in support of Ms. Bruno's budget for Andover Elementary School for the 2021-2022 school year. We all know that the previous 12 months have been tough for everyone, especially our students. COVID-19 has pushed teachers to totally reinvent the ways that we teach and reach our students, not only meet their needs, but often the needs of their families. This school year has been turbulent for our students. Some have moved back and forth between remote and in-person learning. Some are just returning after 10 months of being home, and there are some who still haven't even entered our building since March of 2020. Remote learning is not ideal. It presents our administration and staff with many challenges. It lacks structure and routine, social interaction with peers, direct instruction from a teacher, and real-time support as students encounter challenges with learning. We know that there are students who will continue to need the service of remote instruction next school year. We also need to consider the new students that are off our radar and will enter AES for the first time in the fall. Ms. Bruno's budget prioritizes students and aligns resources where they're needed most. She is cognizant of the needs our students will present next school year. Her budget will support the school staff to meet the demands the pandemic has put on everyone. And on a personal note, my husband and I purchased property in Andover just this past July. We weighed the pros and cons of purchasing a home in other towns, but it was the school and the strong sense of community that drew us into making the final decision to build our home here and raise our family in this town. I've taught in Andover for almost 15 years, and the school has allowed for me to connect with many people. It has become the hub and the unofficial community center. And I've heard the sentiment, "We picked Andover because of the school," many times. So we did too.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Jamie Weber?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Smith?
Greetings, everybody. I just had surgery yesterday, so I'm going to be really brief. I'm here to support the budget. I'm also here because there's an opening on the Board of Education that I'm interested in. It's, I feel my skill set is much more appropriate for that than my service to the Inland Weapons and Water Commission. And I'm here to listen and learn. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Ed.
Hi, Sheila Patrice, 327 Lake Road. I just support, you know, what Celeste said. She had our name in that list, so we're good there.
Thank you. Carrie? If you could state your first and last name?
Carrie Gilbert, and I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there you are.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lucy Wilson?
Hi, everybody. Lucy Wilson, 428 Lake Road. Just came on to support the budget for AES as co-president of the PTA and a resident with two children that have gone through the school system and a daughter still in. So just showing our support for the budget tonight. Thanks.
Okay, Katie Marino?
We're just here in support of the budget as well.
Thank you. Joanne Hubbard?
Hey, Amanda. Can you hear me?
Hey, Amanda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this speaker doesn't always work. So I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say hello and listen in tonight. It's no secret that I advocate for a fair budget. I also agree with everyone else that I want to see quality, high education continue for Andover Elementary School. I think that's what we all want. I've witnessed in the last year a lot of emotion from parents. I'm, in my own particular life, I'm past the emotional state because my three children have graduated and gone on to great things. So I get that if I was speaking with them still in school, I'd probably be very emotional as well. But I also happen to believe that a great quality education is a partnership between parents, home life, direction that we give them there, you know, we guide them to do well, and our great teachers and staff that work with them during the day, not necessarily all the time. So while I say that, you know, I just propose that we, you know, offer a fair amount of money towards our school and look at it that way. I don't want parents to always think that money equates with a great education. It's really a home and school partnership. Together, we work hard. So again, we have to have faith in ourselves as parents to do a good job and and try not to bring emotion into it. So thank you.
Thank you. Principal John Brighty?
Yes, thank you. No real comments. Just great to see so many town residents, staff members, Board of Ed members on this meeting tonight. So thank you very much, and thank you to the Board of Finance for all your efforts.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Brian Briggs?
Um, no, I'm sorry. I just got here. So no, I don't really have anything to say. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, the last person I believe is a phone number eight-six-zero-four-six-two-eight-three-four-four. If you want to unmute yourself, press star six. And it looks like we have everyone else covered.
Okay, so we're all set. All right, thank you, everybody, for your comments. We all know how important it is that the residents get involved in the processes of running the town. That's what we're here about. That's what it's all about here. It's important. We appreciate the effort and also thank you for your support. As you know, this is a difficult task for all of us. Moving on to item, agenda item number three is additions and deletions of the agenda item. Does anybody on the board have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Hello?
Yep. We've moved on. If you could hold up, we're moved on to, from the public speak portion. But you are on, you're listening, so.
And there'll be another opportunity.
Yeah, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting, so. Okay, hearing no additions or deletions of the agenda items, we'll move on to item number four, which is the Town Administrator's Report. We have most of this in our packet. Eric, do you want to go ahead and guide us through this?
Sure. So let me just share my screen here real quick. Presuming I get the right one.
Haven't done this enough, Eric?
No, I'm tired.
Can't imagine why.
Okay, you should see a highlight showing my Administrator's Report. I'm not gonna go over everything. I'm gonna go over just the highlights since this is a long meeting. As you all know, COVID is still an issue in the town of Andover. We're well below our peak. We peaked it somewhere around eighty. You know, infections or cases per day per hundred thousand for a fourteen-day rolling average. At the moment, we're down between twenty and thirty, so that's pretty good. But we're certainly not out of the woods yet. I want to talk a little bit about the legal settlement. The Board of Selectment agreed to a legal settlement with Donna Doiker, who was the old tax collector in the town. She had sued the town over sexual harassment by one of the previous town employees slash Board of Selectmen slash Board of Education members. So we've agreed to our settlement. It will be paid by insurance company Kerma. Should actually have fairly minimal effect on the cost basis for the town because overall, we've been running a pretty low. You know, overall, we've been a good risk as a town. So, you know, we can deal with one fairly large settlement. I also want to point out that the governor released his proposed two-year budget. If you look at the effect on the town of Andover, that's basically level-funded the town of Andover compared to last year. The only thing that really changed is he, his budget projects about twenty-nine thousand dollars in additional coronavirus relief funding. But that's directed to the school, not the town. Building Department, we're upping the fee schedule fairly dramatically. So that should increase our revenues annually somewhere around twenty thousand dollars, just so you know. We lost our resident state trooper, Daryl. Daryl was reassigned to the town of Hebron. We have a resident state trooper that's, or a state trooper that's covering Andover. His name is Chris Ferrara. So he's available. If you need to get ahold of him, you certainly can. We don't know when we're going to get a full-time resident state trooper, and that obviously has a pretty good impact on our budget because depending on how senior an officer that gets assigned to us, it'll make a fairly dramatic difference in what our cost basis is for them. As you know, we were without a burning official for a while. We did appoint Scott Yeomans, or I appointed Scott Yeomans as the burning official for the town. The basic plan is we're gonna charge people for burning permits. It's gonna be thirty bucks. And basically, every dime the town brings in, we're gonna pay to Scott because it's, you know, it's, he's gonna be the one administrating and dealing with it. So the goal is to make it cost-neutral to the town. We used to make the Public Works Director do it, but that chews up a bunch of his time, so it wasn't worth it. As you know, last month, you all approved the purchase of the sweeper. We went ahead and bought a used Pelican sweeper because we frankly just couldn't afford to buy a new one. So we bought a ten-year-old unit. It's in reasonably good shape, considering the number of hours that we put on it as a town. We should be able to deal with a used machine. I also included a bunch of information in your packet about the replacement of one of the town small pickup trucks, medium-sized pickup trucks. We blew an engine on one of the Public Works pickup trucks, and there's a proposal later in the packet on replacing that and how we could pull off doing that by rating a couple of other funds. So I'm not gonna go through the rest of that. And the other big budget we run into in the winter is the snowplow budget. We're doing reasonably well on that. We've expended, you know, right around forty-five thousand dollars in salt. We were fortunate in that last year wasn't a bad year. So we started the year with a stockpile somewhere around twenty-five thousand dollars worth of salt in the shed. So even though we're probably going to spend the whole sixty thousand or maybe a little bit more or go through sixty thousand plus dollars worth of salt, we can do it without actually exceeding the budget this year because we, last year was not a heavy use year. In terms of overtime, it looks like we're somewhere around fifteen, fifteen thousand expended in overtime. So barring a really snowy March, we should be okay for the year for the snow budget. And I also had a bunch of, a long meeting with CME Engineering. We're still trying to do the closeout for the Times Farm Bridge, which has been hanging over our heads for the last three years. We finally got an agreement between our engineering team and the contractor as to what the final bill is, which is somewhere around twenty-one thousand dollars, but of that, we will get back about eighty percent from the state. So we're still, you know, we're not gonna be out all that much money for that. We will still have some expenses to settle our final bills with the engineering firm also. So, but we're overall in good shape and it's actually moving forward. So I'm happy with that. And still working on paperwork for the steep grant for roadwork. We got the steep grant, but you know, there's an awful lot of hoops to, to jump over before they give us any money. We're still held up on the connectivity grant because the state DOT won't release. Basically, they won't release a letter saying we can start because the other DOT project that's going on at the same time is running eight months behind. So the state's kind of screwing us on getting that done. And revaluation, we finished all the data collection for rebow, so that's going pretty well. And the grand list, you know, was up about two percent this year. So that also was pretty good. And Mark, you should have gotten, I think I sent you the letter, the official grand list notification letter.
Yeah.
And that's it for me, unless you have questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Eric? Okay, hearing none. Finance Department report. Have you given this one, Eric?
Yeah, I guess so, because we don't have a budget director yet, so I guess I'll give that one also.
Next media.
So I'm just gonna go through the highlights of the budget summary. There's a few things I want to talk about. Let me, so the first thing is the legal line item that we have. It looks like we're probably going to overexpend the general legal budget for the town. Considering, you know, we've got four months, four and a half months to go, and we're pretty close to overexpending it now. And we're about to go into union negotiations, so I would anticipate we're gonna go over in legal. However, with a little luck, we won't get sued and we can tap the assessor legal fund. For those of you who know, the town typically gets sued once or twice every year when we redo the grand list. Next year, which is a rebow list, you can expect we'll get sued multiple times and have to run up some significant money in legal budget. But with a little luck, we won't this year. So that's legal. Da-da-da-da-da. There's a few minor overages, which I will account for myself because they're less than two thousand dollars. We're gonna be significantly under on the salary for the assistant town clerk because we ran around two and a half months with no town clerk. So we're gonna be significantly under budget on that one. We are likely to go over when we do may elections, depending on what happens and depending on how many budget referendums it takes to get through. There's been a lot more requirements at the state level for elections. And because of that, it requires a lot more manpower to run elections than it has in years past. So, you know, I've been kind of in contact with the registrars. We've been talking it through. But in, I know I brought it to this board and told you this several months ago, but in all likelihood, we're gonna be over-expended on the, you know, on the, the budget for, you know, general government elections. We're currently slightly over-budget for telephone. As you know, out of the town budget, we pay for quite a number of phone lines, you know, throughout the various buildings the town owns. We have a plan in place. We did a subcontract with a company called Granite, which is like a phone aggregator. And it looks like that should be able to knock our overall phone bill down about twenty percent. So by the end of the year, we should be fairly square with that, even though we're just a little bit over now. We are running a little over-budget overall on electricity, but not significantly. And it's not, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a big enough budget. It make, we may be over a thousand or two by the end of the year. So nothing really huge. We've been running considerably under on health insurance on what we had budgeted for health insurance for this year, and that was, that's, that's in large part because we've had some significant gaps. It takes a long time after somebody leaves to actually hire their replacements. So that's been part of it. And last year, as we knew, we had a bunch of employees turning over, we made some fairly conservative estimates and what healthcare costs were gonna be, you know, because if you're hiring somebody, it's, you don't know whether they're single or married or with kids or whatnot. So overall, we ended up under on that, so we should be in good shape overall. As you know, that's one of our biggest line items. We're also, essentially, we haven't spent any money on senior programming just because with COVID right now, we don't really have the option to run trips or do anything. So I would anticipate we're gonna, you know, basically spend about zero on that this year. We're a little over on mobile phones. You know, we, we ended up changing contract plans in part because both the Public Works Supervisor and myself need more mobile data because we both use them to, you know, we both function remotely pretty regularly, running off a mobile data plan. We're over in signs and public works. Part of it was the new crosswalk and new stop sign cost us basically a total of five, actually six extra signs. So we've already exceeded that budget, and we're also replacing the sign, the large sign to the transfer station. So we should, I think by the end of the year, we're gonna be about a thousand dollars over-expended on that. What else? We're doing fine on fuel right now. As you know, for a long period of time, it was pretty warm. We've gone through a big cold spell, but we're still under average on heating degree days. And therefore, our overall fuel consumption has been a little low compared to the average year. We talked about the brush pile a while back, and that's basically, those are the big things in terms of the town budget. And where we are in terms of budgeting. So at this point, I don't have any requests for over expenditure for you. So there's nothing that's kind of bumped up in that threshold that you need to deal with. We included the town budget summaries as well as the revenue summaries. If any of you have any questions for that, I'll answer what I can, but probably I would defer to our tax collector on that. Or our finance person. Anybody have any questions on that? And the other thing that we normally look at, include is the Town Aid Road Fund. That balance is actually, we haven't made the journal entry yet to add the latest amount that's put into the Town Aid Road Fund, so that number should be increased by roughly ninety-three thousand dollars. But then we also paid for the road evaluation package, street scan. So that's about six thousand dollars. So that's really, you know, you know, that, that's why that, that's unfortunately not up to date. That just requires the, the finance office to do the correct journal entries. So we don't need any budget transfers at this point. And I'm not, I don't really have any over expenditure requests for you at this point. So that pretty much takes care of the treasurer's report unless you have specific questions of me.
A pick for Eric? Topic for Eric? Answered a couple of questions already, just in your presentation. Going once, going twice. Okay, move on, I think, to item number six, budget transfers. Eric has already said you have no budget transfer supplemental appropriations or over expenditure requests, correct?
Correct.
Okay, move on to item seven. Um, seven is old business, seven A is the COVID nineteen update. Eric, you already covered that in your town report. Anything more to add?
I don't unless, but we left that in in case members have questions.
Anybody have any questions for Eric? Item seven B is the finance director position. Um, so we've made some progress on there. You wanna kind of update us, uh, Eric, on where we are?
Yep, so at this point, we have uh hired somebody named Sherry Holmes to be the finance director for the town. Uh, actually, the board of Ed signed a contract with her uh week and a half ago or so. So I believe we're anticipating her start date to be March eighth and looking forward.
Shannon shaking her head. Do you know something, Shannon, that we don't know?
Tenth? Okay, March tenth.
Hold on, I thought it was March fifteenth, Valerie. She's gonna show up for the board of Ed meeting on the tenth, but I thought her start date was March fifteenth unless she's changed it.
The tenth is the uh contract date and her first in-person date here, not remote, will be the fifteenth.
There we go.
Okay, fair enough.
That's clarified.
Okay, as far as far as the, uh, oh, other questions on that?
No, um, you know, personally, just I know it's been a long process, so then we're all very happy to have somebody on board. This is uh gonna be a a big move forward for us, I think, in a lot of, lot of different ways, so.
I'm looking forward to sloughing off some of the things I've had to do for the last three or four months. Uh, to somebody that's actually qualified to do that. Yep.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Okay, hearing none. Uh, seven C is the software transition. That was essentially at hold until we have the finance director position filled. Um, Eric, anything more on that, or is that just where we are?
No, that's exactly what we we pretty much decided. We did not want to move forward with that. Because the finance director needs to have a lot of input in exactly what. Both for chart of accounts on the town side, um, and actually to manage the process. And we're fortunate to have somebody who's gone through a software transition before. You know, kind of in a leadership role. So again, that's another one of those things I'm happy to uh to punt to somebody that's more qualified than me.
Okay. If we have no further questions on that, item seven C, I'm sorry, seven D is the audit status. And I think that's also something we're kind of, I don't know if we have any updates, but that's really kind of. Something that's gonna be the finance director's uh job to kind of move along, right?
Well, so right now, the the audit is underway. Um, we have, basically, the the town has subcontracted with the AES. The old AES bu- business manager Laura to give us a hand. Um, and we uh, we gave the information that we had to the auditor. And and Mike has sent us back a, you know, or request for a series of other pieces of information. Um, both a lot of the stuff with their audit. You know, they they asked us to pull, you know, thirty or thirty-five different. Uh, items that we purchased or bid or something like that. And grabbed all the supporting detail to make sure we're doing it per our policies. Um, so we're in the process right now of preparing that to send back to them. Um, it looks like we have about eighty-five or ninety percent of the stuff we need to complete the audit at this point. Um, there probably will be some things the finance director will need to prepare for that. But right now, we're trying to cover as much of that as possible by. The auditors kind of stepped up and been willing to to work on some of the financial statements that normally we do in-house. So with a little luck, in the next, you know, six weeks or so, we'll have a completed audit. Um, not ideal, but you know, better than the alternative.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Eric before we move on to new business? Okay, let's move on to new business, the moment you've all been waiting for. Hey, um, obviously, we're in a. I have our presentation. Uh, item eight A is the presentation of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and over elementary school proposed budget. Uh, superintendent Valerie Bruno is gonna be making the presentation. Uh, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight and uh helping us uh along here. And again, congratulations on keeping the students in school. I know that's a tough thing to do over the last. Last eight months, it's been a, last year, really, it's been a tough one, so um, congratulations on that. So I'll turn it over to you, Valerie.
Thanks. So it has been, it has been a a tough go of things. And and I know that um Joanne Hebert said, you know, we really don't want to get too emotional when we do things. Before I begin, though, I do want one, just one minute of emotion. Because we are thirty-two adults that are on these screens right now. And all I want you to do is think about the last twelve months. And if there was even one time in the last twelve months that you felt overwhelmed by the pandemic. And and wanted someone to call and wanted someone to talk to. School's been open now since the start of the school year, and these kids are still going through this. And so this budget is very different, because as the superintendent, yes, I have to look at finances. But I have to also look and make sure that those needs of our kids are going to be met in this upcoming school year. So that's very important, and I'm sure every one of us, all thirty-two of us could say, yep, there was that one day I just cried for no reason. So I want everyone to keep that one emotion in mind when we consider what we potentially need going forward. So with that, I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here. Um.
And is she also to do that?
I think so.
Okay.
There you go. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yeah.
Yes? I I can't really see any of you guys now.
It's fine.
Thank you so much. So, yes, this is the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two uh budget for the upcoming school year. I'm gonna actually close out my corner here so that I can't see anybody, because otherwise I can't see the whole screen. And I know, uh, Mark, uh, you and the rest of the board are in receipt of um Chairwoman Shannon. Uh, her transmittal letter that came with this as well. So as we go through here, I'm gonna kind of fast forward through through these, a few of these things that um we'll get to as we get there. But we have a timeline here. And we uh have already approved and adopted on the board of Ed's side. Uh, what we believe to be a a good fiscally responsible uh budget proposal. We did that in January. So, you know, here we are with the board of finance, and this is what we'll see through all the way until June, when the budget is approved. Um, I included the 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 mission, the vision, because I I want people to see the mission statement and the vision statement. Of the school and the board, because we're looking to make sure that we have a strong curriculum that's challenging and creative for all. In a safe environment, and those words take on a new meaning this year when we talk about safe environment amidst COVID. We want to make sure we nurture the kids. We want to make sure that they have values of responsibility, respectfulness, and a desire of learning. We look at the vision statement, and we want to make sure again that we have a safe educational environment, not just a physical environment. That establishes a foundation for students to become creative, moral, and compassionate people. Um, so this vision and mission statement hasn't changed. We move forward to the next school year with the same thing in mind. That's why we do this. Now, the who we do it for, uh, I know that this slide has been a bone of contention. I know Mr. Foreign had spoken about this, Dan had spoken about this. Um, I know it's very difficult for some people who are not currently in the school right now to understand why. We have the three kindergarten classes, and yes, that is absolutely the elephant in the room. Um, understand that we are not adding staff. Uh, as a matter of fact, when we look at the number of classrooms, you can see there, it's fourteen. It's remained fourteen from the two thousand eighteen school year all the way through till the end of twenty-two. Um, we are not adding a classroom, we are not adding any teachers. What we're doing is we are taking the same number of classrooms, and although we have a teacher that is retiring. Um, this year, we are eliminating a paraprofessional position. And taking that person who was working with our preschoolers, who is a teacher certified. And moving her to that third kindergarten class. So it is still quite a reduction already on our part. It's a reduction of one position, which is a paraprofessional position. And a reduction from a teacher who's at the top of the step to a teacher who will be at the beginning of the ladder. Um, and I do agree with naysayers that in any other year, we would consider. Uh, making those class sizes in kindergarten in grade three larger. But it is my opinion and my professional opinion uh that in doing so, we could, in the long run. Wind up with extensive costs related to not addressing the learning gap potential needs of these kids. And I have explained publicly once before that we already know beyond a shadow of a doubt. That those thirty uh kindergarten kids include eight kids that are coming in. That we know have not been in preschool um through the whole pandemic. Um, we know also that we have three existing um preschoolers. That are set to move up to kindergarten that um have significant needs. Um, and they have individual uh paraprofessional needs. And so, taking those thirty kids and placing them fifteen and fifteen in a classroom is not advantageous. And I consider this a COVID-related expense for us to keep the current staff instead of cutting it. And again, we're not adding any staff members. What we're doing is keeping the existing staff members there. You'll notice those top three classes are getting bigger. And once we get through this pandemic, um, then we will see those classes. I am not opposed to larger class sizes in any other year. That's not something that um that that I have a problem with. I think that what we will see in the coming years is grades three, two, and one. Uh, significantly increasing the class sizes um as the years, as the years go on here. Okay. So what's changed, well, we said COVID nineteen pandemic from last year to this year, that's really shifted. Uh, the world to distance learning, so there have been distance learning expenses. And there have been some changes that need to take place within the building to accommodate. We're very proud of the fact that at the beginning of the year, um, we had uh about nineteen percent of the kids that originally started. On distance learning. Uh, last week, we were down to six percent. And as of next week, we will be down to almost able to count on one hand the number of kids. We need two hands, but we're we're getting there, the number of students that have returned to school. Uh, so so that's that's fantastic. However, we will need to make sure that we're always ready on a moment's notice. To go back to distance learning with sickness, with flu, with pandemic, with anything. We'll have to be ready for that in the future. And that's just not something that we had to plan for prior to this year, obviously, new superintendent. Um, we had reopening plans that needed to be solidified. We had teacher contracts, which we only get every four years. And unfortunately for the budget, this happens to be one of those years. Um, our enrollment has remained stagnant. Um, we're right about the same that we've been for the past few years, give or take a couple of kids. No dramatic, huge changes there. Um, we signed a teacher uh MOA, uh, which was an agreement, uh, a memorandum of agreement or understanding. As to what the work conditions would be, and that went very well. Uh, and the teachers, you know, were were ready to jump right into action at the beginning of the year. We have a non-cirque contract that's just moments away or days away from uh being finished. And so we have to consider the costs associated with that in this budget as well. And as Eric had mentioned earlier, we have the business offices merging. And on our end, um, although we're sharing it, we had a a part-time business manager before. So there there will be some difference in cost for us there as well. Um, and then we do have new requirements, recommendations, as well as mandates for safety and health that will need to be implemented. Um, if they've already been implemented, they'll need to be maintained. So how will we do this within AES logistically? Well, in terms of staffing. Um, yes, we 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 can't get rid of any staff members that are currently here, but we're also not asking for any new staff. Um, and I know there are other towns that that do have to, due to the number of students that they have on distance learning. They've had no choice but to bring in other bodies. Um, and because our dedicated staff has been here, um, you know, the whole time. We've been very lucky that we don't have a need to ask uh the taxpayers to uh offer us more staff for that for next year. Because we're we're doing pretty well with the distance learning, uh, being able to staff that. Um, so that we'll have the same number of classrooms next year. Again, we're not adding anymore. Um, and we'll have to continue with comparable classroom spending and just not add any other initiatives. So when you look at this budget, you won't see any new initiatives, any new curriculum, any new large-scale supplies. We've had to just say, that's that's gotta be on hold for now. We're just going to have to, you know, steer the ship with the um good. Solid curriculum that we currently have, um, and not look for any uh more innovative things. Um, we did speak with the teachers' union and say, okay, it's budget season. Uh, what do you guys need next year? And um, they said, we we just need to make sure that we maintain a level of professional development. So that we can continue to be ready at all times for distance learning. And we can um go with the times and make sure that we're switching over from all all of the consumables that we might use. To integrating some more technology. And I know a lot of people think, well, if you have a computer, there's no costs associated with technology, which there are, because there's licenses to be able to use certain tech. So how will we do this? I'm gonna take a quick peek as we go through by object area in hopes of being able to. Um, assist all of all of the members of the board, as well as the town that are on tonight to understand.
Valerie, can you explain what's meant by object? I don't know that that's clear to everybody. It's gonna be confusing.
Yep, so as we go through, you'll see that um there are um categories of um costs. And they're all, when they're all related to one another, they all fall under one sub-number. So as we go through, um, I will point those out. So I'm gonna start with um what revenue we have coming in besides uh the money from the town. I'll look at preschool first. Um, and again, I I you'll, you guys will have to, if you need me to stop, you'll have to shout out, because I can't see any of you while I'm sharing my screen. So we do have for preschool, we have money that comes in from the school readiness grant, about a hundred thousand dollars. And that's used to pay some salaries and PD. We have money that comes in from Smart Start Grant, and that goes toward our second paraprofessional salary there. Um, and other grant requirements. I know at one point, there was some question about some of the things that we do provide in the program. At one point, I know a parent did ask about things like snacks and things like um supplies. Um, because we're the beneficiaries of these revenue sources, there are specific guidelines. For example, you will see orders that come in of toothpastes and toothbrushes, and people say, you're spending your money on toothpaste. Well, we have to, because part of the curriculum is to make sure that with hygiene, that the kids brush their teeth. We don't pay for that out of our taxpayer dollars. That comes out of the grant, but to get the grant, you have to make sure that you follow suit. The same thing with the snacks. They they give you guidelines and things like that, so. Um, and the quality enhancement grant is only for professional development for um the preschool program. So when we look, we bring in tuition costs that on a normal year, we can usually expect to be about ninety thousand now. I will say that last year with COVID, excuse me. With COVID, there was a time period where we weren't bringing in the same revenue. Um, and so that can fluctuate depending on what occurs, the number of children go up or down. Um, so ninety is the average there. So when we look, it is self-sufficient with the exception of the benefits to the employees. Um, and I know that a lot of other towns, if you look at Hebron, if you look at Marlboro, the benefits are not separated out. They're right in the rest of their budget so that people don't realize that, but we are very transparently saying, yes. That is the only cost. The only cost is the benefits to the employees that are that work in that program. On a normal year, we have other revenue sources that come in as well.
Valerie, can I back you up just a little bit there? So.
To the this slide.
Yes, thank you. So these these, are these grants, like you said, money from the school readiness grant. Is that have to be allocated to these particular salaries? Okay. So you've got it, you're explaining that this grant pays for that directly, or you're just kind of showing where proportionally it falls?
It has to go to preschool.
It's really that category.
Correct. So but there are, there are earmarks for each of these grants. And so that's why we do have the liaison. We have our early childhood liaison that helps to prepare these grants. She does this for a number of towns to make sure that we're within those guidelines, Mark, so that we don't lose that money. So they, just like with COVID relief money, when it came in, it said, you must use it on this, this, and this. And yes, school readiness grant has the guidelines of which it says the paraprofessional, their professional development goes with that grant requirement. So absolutely, like I said, the third one, the thirty-eight-hundred-dollar one can only be used for professional development. It can't be used for anything else.
So so that essentially what we're looking at here is you've got a budget of it's basically a three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar cost, three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar cost. And about a quarter of that is, maybe that's not quite right, a little less, is is borne outside of the the grants and the tuition for the preschool.
About.
So we've got a net cost basically in the preschool of seventy-two thousand, basically is what you're saying.
Just for the benefits, yes.
All right.
Yes. So, Mark, let's pretend hypothetically speaking that all of our four employees that worked in preschool said, we don't need benefits. Our husbands or spouses or significant others had benefits. There wouldn't be a cost. There's only a cost because we provide medical benefits.
Right.
Employees.
Got it.
Got it?
Hey, Mark, are we allowed to ask questions during the presentation, or do we wait till after?
Well, I'm doing it. So, yeah, I think, yeah, I think we just don't want to interrupt Valerie too much, but I I think that we really have to ask the questions.
I do have a question, Valerie.
Sure.
Are there out-of-state, out-of-town students that go to the pre-K program?
Well, Louise, there's currently two, and I believe there, if I'm not mistaken, somebody could chime in and correct me. They're related to us. They're out-of-towners, but they're already attached. John, are you on, or Jenny?
Yes, that's my understanding also.
So other than that, Louise, I think the tough part for us, and I have to tell you, when I was, when I was doing this budget, the very first thing that I did in the fall was to actually sit down with our then-business manager and say, you know, we, because we have three classrooms this year. I said, sit with me and talk about the costs of two classrooms versus three classrooms. What if we were to get a large number of out-of-town kids? Would this make us more money, or does this hurt us? And it actually hurts us in the long run because of the amount of revenue. If we had that, if we keep adding classrooms, the revenue doesn't go up to the same capacity that it does right now, the outside revenue, number one. And number two, Hebron has their own preschool. Marlboro has their own preschool, and there's a preschool at Ram. So there's competition, I guess you could say. There wouldn't be a reason for people out of town to necessarily come here if they don't live here, work here, or have their children in school here. So so, yeah.
Do we, do we receive any additional funds for those other two?
Valerie, I just wanted to comment. This is Shannon Louise.
All right, the chair is going to recognize Shannon. Please raise your hand, guys. Let us know. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. Just real quickly, and I know Valerie knows this, but I'll let her take a drink. One of the reasons that we have admitted out-of-town children to our preschool program is to qualify for the Smart Start Grant. So in order to qualify for the Smart Start Grant, they have to be at an income level that allows us to qualify for that grant. So in allowing out-of-towners to come in, we have typically allowed that. And again, there are only two students that we're now providing for, but those two students allow us to have the sixty-five-thousand-dollar Smart Start Grant.
Is that because the average?
No, 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 you have to have a certain number of attendees that meet that benchmark of need. And so if they don't meet that benchmark of need, and we don't have that slot filled by a student who meets that need, then your eligibility requirements are not met.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to title grants.
Do those students pay full tuition? Sorry, or is that covering their tuition?
The students that meet, there's, there's a a number of different thresholds. So there's certain slots that are slated for the very, very reduced or special education students that 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 don't pay. Then there are a certain number of slots here currently where the students, Mark, if you'd like, I can actually send you the whole printout that has the number of kids that fall into each category and who pays what and how many students need to fit into each category for us to meet the eligibility requirements.
I'm okay without it, as long as there are any board members that really want that. I just wanted to understand a little bit of how this is financed. You were basically, you know, again, the seventy-three-thousand-dollar cost of the town. You know, I just thinking out loud, is there a way that the, you know, this, the preschool can be self-financing? You know, is there, how does the tuition work? You know, there's obviously a fair amount of money coming in for tuition. So I'm just kind of curious as to how all of this works together.
Mark, real quickly again, Shannon, we have taken a look at that. And in fact, in the last two years, have dramatically increased our tuition costs so that, and and also, as Valerie's already pointed out, need to stay competitive with area programs so that Andover students aren't going to to pre-K in Hebron. So two things that are very important about the pre-K program. Number one, well, three things. Number one, they're twenty percent of our student population. So we need the pre-K. Number two.
Well, it's all about costing us net, so. When you say we need the pre-K, there's actually a net cost to the to the pre-K.
That's correct.
I don't know that we need the pre-K, except that it's
Well, here's why we need the pre-K. Okay, so here's why we need the pre-K for two reasons. Number one, we instituted this in about four years ago, I know, during my chairmanship. And the reason that we brought it in is because we were losing students to magnet schools for which we have to pay five-thousand dollars per student on average to send a student to a magnet school. And last year, we had twelve students in magnet schools. We have brought that number down, and I don't know what that number now is. But the bottom line is, what we were finding was that parents were taking their their kids to where they worked and putting them in pre-K where they worked. The students were getting involved in the magnet schools where their parents worked, and then we were losing them from Andover Elementary School. So that's why one of the basic impetus is for us bringing about pre-K. The other thing is, we have a legal obligation to educate our pre-K students. And we have special need students. So for example, I know of one student who we would be required to bring four specialists for that one preschool student to his house to educate him at the cost of what it will cost us to educate thirty pre-K students right now. So I think the taxpayers need to appreciate that we have legal obligations to educate pre-K students, and we're choosing to do it to educate twenty and thirty students as opposed to two or three special need students, which we would have a legal obligation to educate and provide for all of the various special needs therapists that would be sent to their homes.
Okay, good information. Thank you. Didn't realize that. Rob?
Mark, can I just throw something in, just, you know, not as a board of finance member, but as a parent in the town? As many of you know, I have two daughters. Both of them have been through, they're currently in AES. Both have been through the pre-K program, although my eldest started somewhere else. I would just say that beyond, even if you put aside special needs, which you shouldn't, it's a tremendous resource for a working parent. You know, the pre-K program is great, and you're dealing with, if you address issues early, you can potentially head things off that, you know, would potentially be a problem. Say, if you don't, years later, then you end up outsourcing something and and spending a hundred thousand dollars a year to send somebody to a, you know, somewhere else to deal with their special needs when you could have addressed it in-house. So we just throw that, throw that out there as like kind of the idea of investment on the ups, you know, in the early going rather than dealing with it on the backside. That's all.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not really questioning the value of it, because I do believe in the value of it. I'm just want to understand, you know, what the real commitment needs to be and what the impact of the town is, you know, so we understand what we're gaining for for the investment. That's it.
I didn't answer your question. So the the high end is six-hundred dollars per month per student for pre-K. And that is the most that we can charge, I think, formulaically. And it's also compiled what Hebron charges and more than what Ram charges for preschool as or pre-K as far as I know. So I just wanted to make sure, we have looked and have addressed, and actually I've asked Principal Riede. We we addressed at our last board meeting what we were considering the budget, whether there was any play in charging more tuition for our pre-K. And we're at our our highest level right now that that we could be at as far as I I've been told. So sorry to interrupt again.
Really quick, just just to point a clarification. I remember when my kids were in pre-K, that's a while ago now, there was a sliding income scale. It was basically you pay, it was self-reported, you know, whatever your income was, you would pay in a certain range. Is that still the case? Okay.
And Robert, the other thing is, and and Mark, and anybody else who has questions on the preschool, you know, you both have alluded to this. I can tell you that six right now of our our pre-K students are identified with special needs. And so as Shannon said, any one of those kids could cost us, if we look at this from a financial point of view, seventy-two thousand dollars. That was really the point that I was also trying to make in pointing out the need with eight kids coming in that have no preschool as to what we need to consider with the three kindergartens. Because, and that's not adding staff, that's an existing staff member. Because if we have even one of those kids that falls through the cracks next year in kindergarten and is identified as special education with services, just so that everybody understands, if there's one child that requires a one-on-one paraprofessional even for one school year, that costs us right there well over fifty thousand dollars. So it is definitely good business for us this year. While we're reevaluating those students coming in, the special education needs of the kids as well as kids that could have potential learning gaps due to COVID, it is well worth it for this next year. We will potentially save thousands, hundreds of thousands if we had a number of kids. And it's it's not so easy, once a student's identified, and this is my special ed background. It's not so easy, once they're identified and you offer the services, to take them back. I know people say all the time where we have two outplay students. They're like, well, can't we take them back? Once a student's in an environment where they're, it's meeting their needs, they're thriving, that's where they stay. And the last thing I'll add with with preschool, because no one said it yet, is it's accredited. We are NIAC accredited. Ten percent, ten percent of preschools can say that they are accredited under NIAC, and we are. So we are considered, and I know a lot of people think, oh, just a little old dando, Andover. We are considered a top-notch preschool program. And so that mere fact right there may actually be why we've prevented in kindergarten, first, and second grade, further students being identified, further students falling behind and requiring, maybe not special education services, but remediated services and other services that would cost us money. So it's definitely an investment that's well worth it, especially in a year of uncertainty like this. So, okay, so I'm going to move on. I'm sorry, I can get long-winded.
That's fair. We stopped you.
I'm sorry, I can get long-winded. So we also do receive title grants. In twenty-twenty, our Title I grant, which we had been receiving fairly regularly, and that's a federal formula. We received sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-five. For twenty-twenty-one, since it's a federal formula and it's done based on census, we will not qualify for Title I funding next year, which I do have to tell you means that we can't count on further S or Corona money after what just came through. Because a lot of that is going to be based on Title I funding. So if we're lucky, maybe we will get it. I had gotten an email from Joe Courtney's secretary this week about a new round of funding that was coming out in Andover was zero. And I put in a phone call to find out, and they said that one is for next year's Title I funding, and we know we're not getting any. So so we are losing that money right there. Title II funding, it goes down a bit, but we do receive twenty-six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars for twenty-twenty-one. Title III is five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, and Title IV is ten thousand. And I will tell you that historically, the ten thousand has gone toward the salary of our remedial teacher, Mrs. Caraboni, or Mrs. Frazier, because it is remediation and helping students. So so we are, we are at a loss here for some funding, but we've planned for that knowing going forward. So what do we normally use these Title I grants for? As I just said, Title I and II, together, roughly twenty thousand for the two years, has helped pay the salary of the remedial reading professional, Mrs. Caraboni. Our Title III, that small amount, goes to a consortium that we have with East Con, that five hundred dollars. And the Title IV goes for Mrs. Frazier, who we say this out, she's tech, but she also does remedial math as well. So the bottom line for preschool is that it is self-sufficient, with the exception of the benefits package, as I said, we will take the displaced para and they will become that third kindergarten teacher. So there are some COVID expenses that were not planned for last time around that we did have to take care of this year. We had to take care of PPE. We had to take care of the individualized supplies for students. The dividers for the desks for the teachers, as well as the students, outdoor changing changes such as parking lot signs and relining. We did a completion during the course of the past year of one-to-one devices so that everybody has them. They're up, they're running, and they are maintained. We had extra nurse services at the beginning of the year. We had bus monitors at the beginning of the year, remote learning software and additional licenses that need to now be maintained. Extra cleaning supplies and custodial needs, repair and maintenance of HVAC and additional air-conditioned system changes. Other adoptions such as water fountains, the changes so that the the children, you know, weren't putting their mouth to it. It's the the newer ones now where you can actually fill a water bottle. To offset this, we did receive some money.
Valerie, you have a breakdown of of what those costs were, the additional costs?
So I know, Mark, you had asked, somebody else had asked for that, too. The problem is, I want to be fair. A fair number of those things were taken care of with this relief money. Some of the other things are now permanent and need to be maintained. And people would say they're no longer a COVID-related expense, because they're going to be permanent. Like I said, the licenses, when we first had to purchase licenses on new software programming that the children used while on remote learning, it immediately was a COVID-related expense. But now, I I I don't think it's fair for me to say, oh, that's just a COVID expense, when in reality now, that's going to replace some of the consumables and books and things. So for me to give you the total breakdown, I'm not sure that I can split certain things up as used to be, like the water fountains. We're not going to take them out once COVID's over. So that initial cost for them came out of this money here that you're looking at. And, yeah, we'll have to maintain the water fountains, but it's no longer now a COVID-related expense, because from here going forward, those are our new water fountains.
We've already spent that money, too.
Right. So I want to be fair and not mislead and say that there are certain things that are going to continue to be COVID-related expenses, because now they're going to be permanent.
Well, the reason I ask is that in a different part of your presentation, where you, we kind of mentioned ongoing COVID-related costs. So just trying to tease out what
What we did do, Mark, with the Board of Ed, when they took the seventy-four-thousand dollars out, there had actually been eight thousand dollars in there that were things that someone could say, how do you know at the end of next year, you'll still have them as COVID-related expenses? PPE, things like that. And we we took that out because we figured that that would be funded through this last round of S R. And so straight expenses in here where I'm And so, uh, straight expenses in here where I'm asking for money for, um, for masks and things, there isn't any of that in here. It's just things that are going to remain permanent. Okay, so as we go through, um, and I know that Jerry had alluded to this earlier when he talked about wants and needs and non-negotiables. Um, there are no wants in this budget, and if someone goes through here, they'll see, we are not asking for extra programming. Um, we are not asking for, some districts have had to, or actually, I think Ram even had to, um, put in their, uh, money for summer school programming for, and that was a COVID-related thing for them to avoid, um, gaps, learning gaps. We didn't ask for summer programming. We didn't ask for recreational programming. We didn't ask for new initiatives, outdoor equipment, playground, any of that. None of that is in this budget on purpose. Because I really felt that there were people that would say, well, you can live without that. That's a want. Wait until you can get a grant for that, and they're right. And that's why those things are not in here, um, because we can live without them. Uh, the needs, the things that are in here. Um, I do know that at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, someone said, well, they have fifty thousand dollars in there for air conditioning. We do not. And I would, you know, challenge anyone to find it in our budget. What you will see is, is that there are, um, just maintenance fees for, uh, things that we had to do. We did get some, um, air cooling system work done recently, and that was a very, um, difficult to get grant, uh, that we got at the end of the year. But, um, we did manage to get fifteen thousand dollars to go into what is now the preschool room downstairs and make sure that the air cooling system in there, um, was going to be something that, um, could get us through for the next few years uh, in 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 air conditioning there. Um, but that was not something that was paid for budgetarily speaking, and there isn't any in this budget as well. Um, we do, in terms of non-negotiables, I've mentioned this twice, we have two contracts to consider here. So right off the top, um, we did have two, um, two contracts that were 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 going to be settled for here. We still have two outplaced students, and we do still continue to have magnet expenses for other students. The two outplaced students, and I'll show you where they are on the budget, but, um, right there, that's two hundred thousand dollars almost. So here are the numbers. And this is in the packet. If anyone wants to find it on the website, I know that, um, Amanda had uploaded it. Thank you. Uh, some of these percent changes are very difficult for people to see because, uh, it involves an explanation. They're a little bit skewed. If you look at that object one hundred across the top, that's the salaries. Um, and although the number of staff remains the same, so it's like, hmm, how do we have an in increase? Um, we had a negotiated contract this year, and so there are, um, increases, uh, that come a- a- across all four years for teachers as well as non-cert. The benefits as well.
What what's that percentage each year? I mean, are we going to be facing a four percent increase? I mean, how? Uh, I know that it's not that, but tell us what it is.
So actually, it came in lower than 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 the teachers at Ram, um, because, and I want to thank Jenny and Melissa, who I know are on here. Um, it was a very fair teacher's contract. It was a four-year contract. And, um, they opted for budgetary purposes to assist us in making sure that the first year, this one was going to be the lowest of the three, because they're of the four, because there would be other expenses. So, um, it's a two-point-five percent increase this year and three for the three years that follow. So it's very fair. I think, uh, three-point-six-three was what the the Ram contract was. And so, you know, I I do give kudos to the the teachers here, um, for understanding that, you know, it was fair. They were not.
Sorry, it's two-point-five-three for this year?
Two-point-five, it was, yeah, because it was three, six, nine. There was eleven-point-five total over four years. And so the way they divided it was two-point-five, three-three and three.
And your, but your percent change here is it's three-point-nine-nine, and you're losing one feature to retirement, replacing with a lower.
We also, Mark, have the non-cert negotiations. The non-cert negotiations are built into that as well, and that's not finalized yet. We think we know where it is, but it's, it still hasn't been approved. And remember, there's the loss of the Title One funding for next year as well, that fifteen thousand that.
Yeah, that shouldn't be in there. I mean, that should be.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that that was a salary that was covered with that last year or a per- or a percentage of it was. We look at benefits, um, the benefits, um, we're all in the same, um, consortium. Uh, Hebron, Marlboro, Andover, Ram, uh, the municipalities and the Board of Ed. And so it's, um, an overall three-point-two increase for for everybody, uh, across the board there. Um, in the three hundreds, when we get to it, um, and we'll get to the specifics of it in a minute. Um, this is where we have a lot of our contracted services, and I want to be able to explain that to you when we get to that section in just a moment. Um, the four, the section four is going to involve some explanation because there were some prepaid services, um, that occurred, and we'll get to that in just a second. So it looks like it's fifty-nine percent, but it really isn't. Um, it was just money that was, um, encumbered for the nineteen-twenty school year. Um, and then, uh, the same thing with the six hundreds. So let me move on, and then if somebody has questions, we'll go back to this because I do have this slide repeated after my explanation. So if we look at this object of the one hundreds, and I know it's hard to see it, I apologize for that, but I didn't realize it was so fuzzy on the top. Um, the increase here would be the, uh, cost associated with contract negotiations and the fact that we had one person that part of their salary was coming out of Title One funds, which now has to come out of the salary line item.
So this is not just salary, it would have been salary plus title one grants?
No, we had one person, our remedial teacher's salary, um, that because of what she does for, um, the remedial interventions, we were always able to take part of her salary and utilize Title One funding to cover that. And that fifteen thousand or or almost sixteen thousand is gone. So her whole salary now comes out of there. Um, if you look, and I highlighted, uh, boldly, the every-four-year mark here because this proposed two-point-three, uh, two-five million is a contract year. And the seventeen-eighteen, two-point-six million was the last contracted year. Just so that you can see, you know, contract to contract there because it's every four years. We really have tried to reduce the staff as much as possible, and I'm going to talk about that in just one second when we get to the other, um, section with the contracts.
Okay. Are these budgeted numbers or actual expenses for the previous years?
They're the actual expenses. I had to think about which one Laura gave me. Except for the proposed, obviously, here. When we get to the two hundreds, these are the benefits, and as I said, you'll see with all of us, it's going to be about that three-point-two percent. Uh, because that is our percent for the insurance consortium, uh, increase. And then we have, um, just two employees that were moving to family, and that would be the the slight difference of the two point of of the point-two-nine instead of the point-two-oh after the three. When we look at the long-term changes to the two hundreds, which are the benefits to the employees, again, the, um, bold are the years that contracts were negotiated. Um, and you'll see that, you know, we really are also, every time we negotiate a contract, we are trying to be fair to the employees, but make sure that, um, we try to offset the best we can. Um, the board's percentage and their percentage so that we don't see very large in- increases. We try to be as fair as possible, but, um, we make sure that it's in line with other districts, uh, that their percentage um, for premium, um, doesn't stay stagnant, that it goes with the times as well. So this one, I'm going to cover a little bit more here because I know this, this has had been a bone of contention for some, uh, people that I I listened to at the 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 Board of Selectmen meeting, and so I think it it involves a a very, very brief but detailed explanation. So I I I know that, you know, it's it's already eight forty, but bear with me on this one. You won't be sorry.
Take your time.
When we talk about professional and contracted services, I I know that there is a lot of misinformation from the Board of Selectmen meeting on the part, not only of Selectmen, but on the part of some of the general population here in Andover too, that I hear people talk about shared services a lot, and they keep saying, you know, well, they need to make sure that they're looking at shared services as an option. And I want to explain this because shared services is fantastic, especially when you are a small town and you have an opportunity to sign a contract with another small town and say, hey, let's go Habsies on something because then it saves us all money. And this is generally speaking, you know, your first line of defense to start to save money. Um, you know, I mean, I see Shannon on the screen, so I'll use her as an example. If if Shannon and I want to both go out to dinner and and she's got, you know, money in her pocket, I have money in my pocket, and I say, want to go Habsies? You know, we'll go to dinner and we'll split the bill, you know? Um, it sounds like a great idea until you find out that Shannon has a hundred dollars in her pocket and I only have ten. And so going out to a fine steakhouse is just not going to happen for the two of us because I can't go Habsies with her. I can barely pay for an appetizer. Shared services need to occur when you begin to look at ways to save money. Um, my predecessor, uh, in terms of planning a budget, um, was able to, uh, and and it needed to be done, and it was, you know, rightfully so, but she was able to, over the course of five years, do some very significant cutting to staff and services that we're lucky it didn't affect the outcome for children, but it made it so that we were bare-bonesed. So I want to give you an example. We have a special ed director, um, who's thinking maybe next year she's going to retire. So if Marlboro or Hebron or Columbia or Bolton say, hey, Val, we need, um, also to have a special ed director, so, you know, go Habsies with us. I can't go half with them because it would cost me too much money to go halves with them because my special ed director is here one and a half days a week. So if any other town wants me to split a special ed director and sign a contract, it's going to cost me more because I'm not at that half point. We're well below the half point. So it won't save us money. This is the case, if you're looking at this screen with our our OT, our OT person, we pay them to come here to do a job, and we pay them hourly, uh, by contract, and then they leave. And do they work someplace else? Yes, they do because they can't survive being a part-time OT here. I happen to know that our current OT works in Marlboro. Do we have a shared service contract with Marlboro? No. Because it would cost us more to pay half for this person. We don't require their services at a point-five percentage of the time, and to go to point-five would cost us more money. So we're sharing them. We just don't have a signed contract with them because we can't tell our OT person who she can share with us and who she can't. Um, and I equate that to, uh, if anyone has a cleaning person that comes to your house on Thursdays. Uh, yeah, they clean other people's houses every other day of the week, but you don't have a shared service contract with other houses because you don't get to tell that person where else they work. Um, they work for you part-time, they work for everybody else part-time. That's the point we're at. So we are actually below in the special ed area, the ability to sign shared contract services. Or, I mean, obviously, you know, I'm part-time. Our special ed director is here one and a half days a week. Our, um, OT person is here, uh, ten to thirteen hours a week. That's it. Our PT person, right now, we don't have one because we don't have any services that, um, are needed for our students. So we will call them in on an as-needed basis. We do have a contract with AHM for our social work services. Um, so, you know, we pay just for what we need with our social worker and our school psychologist. So everybody is already far below the threshold of us being able to sign a contract when it comes to special ed services with the town. We're below that already. We've already gone down. We do have shared services. For those people who are speaking about shared services, we have a shared food service with Coventry. We share, as as I've mentioned before, we share our, um, insurance consortium with the Region Eight, with Marlboro, with Hebron, and with the municipalities and AHM. Um, so where we can have our shared services, we have shared busing, um, you know, with Region Eight for DATCO. Where we can have those shared services, we do. But we've already kind of expended all the other areas, and, um, we have the ten dollars and they don't want to take us out to dinner. So I did want to explain that just because in that respect, you'll see this area, it doesn't go up a lot. Um, but, uh, we are as low as we can go here. We can't sign anymore.
Why is it going up at all, though? I guess it'd be the question they have to ask.
Um, well, legal fees are in here and are, there are certain services that, um, I can tell you, for example, because I just had, uh, the secretary get this for me. Um, when a special education student has the triennial review, um, they determine at that time what their service hours are. So, for example, they'll say they need, you know, um, thirty minutes twice a week of speech and language services. They'll need OT, you know, twice a month at thirty minutes. So when we put this budget together, I sat down with the special education director and said, what are our service needs for those twenty-four, um, students that we're referring to? And those students that have five-oh-fours, which are also a, a service that we need to provide. It's it's a legal document, just like a, an IP is for for services that need to be provided, um, for students in need. And we have, you know, other students that, um, are being evaluated as we speak. Um, and so if the the increase there, um, the contracted increase there, uh, does relate to the service needs of the students.
So I have one question. This is Diane Tricat. So is that what? Is that the driver of the increase in the professional education services? That's increasing like almost nineteen thousand dollars?
Is which the driver?
What you just said, these additional services that need to be provided, additional time. So, in the object overview, there's a breakdown of what's in the three hundreds. And I'm looking at a big increase of eighteen thousand dollars under professional education services, going from one sixty-six, eight fifty to one eighty-five, seven hundred. So I'm curious is what is driving that big increase?
Well, part of it, I mean, we'd have to go line item there by line items so that we could say which is, um, for example, our AHM increase, which increases, uh, which is specifically OT services or pre-K services? Which are referrals? Um, you know, is that what you're asking me? How do we break it?
So under three hundred, professional technical services, you have a line item that says professional education services. Current budget is one sixty-six, eight fifty. Proposed budget is one hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred. I'm interested to know what's driving that increase.
Well, it would be the.
Page seventy-two of the packet.
It would be, um, it would also include the tech-related services, um, to carry out those student services. So I can get the breakdown of of exactly, if it's not in the 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 one that we're going to get to at the end, which of it is tech-related for those student services and what is direct services? OT time, PT time, psych time. I I I don't know the specific breakdown. I just know that.
That would be great because I'm just curious to know what is driving that increase.
We could, we'll probably get there, I guess, is that.
Yeah.
Let me just write that down, Diane, one second.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, okay, so the long-term changes, as you can see, uh, to this area, um, you'll see we're at two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand and four-hundred-and-ten dollars for this, uh, particular proposed budget. Now, last year would have been slightly less because remember, we didn't have all of those services um, that were administered March, April, May, and June. And I will find out, uh, the cost savings there as well. We move to the four hundreds. Um, again, uh, these are contracted maintenance services, um, not student need services, maintenance services, and this is the one that has that skewed number. And part of that is because if you look, we were at eighty-nine thousand, um, when you go back to line items there. Um, and if you look at the one forty-two, and now it's, uh, an increase of fifty-three thousand. Part of the issue was that in the spring when we closed, there were certain expenses that Laura, the then-business manager, fifty-three thousand dollars worth of expenses in the twenty-twenty-one school year, that Laura then was able to, knowing that we were in shutdown, that she was able to, um, pay out of the budget. Um, you know, uh, that that was, uh, there for, uh, twenty-twenty. So nineteen and twenty. So the the encumbered expenses there, some of them go back, a total of a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars of those expenses um, go back to her using money during the shutdown from, uh, that budget to pay ahead of those expenses that we had, um, i- during the shutdown. So that's what, that's what she did was prepay those services.
So I I just want to clarify what's going on here. I I understand what what's. So I I just wanna clarify what's going on here. I I understand what what's, what you're saying and everything, but just for the other board members and things, I'm just, we understand. So basically, there was unspent money from the budget from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, so it was spent at the end of that budget year, understanding that it was gonna need, you know, they were basically using un-unspent funds from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget into twenty sort of things that they were gonna need in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So basically, it was the extra. If you remember, we got a request from the superintendent a little over a year ago about I think it's roughly eighty-three thousand dollars of unexpended funds. They wanted to move it into the, uh, school improvement account. Uh, and then it turns out at the end of the year, it wasn't, they didn't actually have that available. I think this is why, cuz it was spent on items such as this in advance.
And and this four hundreds right here, Mark, shows you that, um, Laura had fifty-three thousand dollars that was prepaid year for this particular object. So, you know, if you added that fifty-three to the eighty-nine, it would have actually been one forty-two and you wouldn't have seen um, a, a fifty-nine point, uh, one percent increase. Um, this, this property services line item here really isn't going up like that. You'll see it went from one forty-two to one forty-two-two, but yes, it was
But it's still, it's still was budgeted at eighty-nine thousand for that year, so it doesn't it's, we still have to understand why it's gone from eighty-nine thousand a year. I I understand that we spent more. But we still, you know, it was only budgeted eighty-nine thousand. Why do we end up spending, you know, fifty thousand more would be the question, you know? As opposed to what was budgeted.
So you wanna know of the fifty-three thousand exactly what in the four hundreds it was?
Right. What, why did we have to spend another fifty-three thousand in that account? What did it go to? It's, it's, it's kinda shifting it from one place to another, I'm sure, you know, for for whatever needs. So just trying to understand drastically underbudgeted for that year or or where's that coming from?
I will get a list of those things for you.
Okay, just understand where that came from.
Um, in the five hundreds, um, this other purchased services, um, this includes the funds for the student tuition, the two outplaced students, the bus contracts, the telephone services, printing, binding, and software licenses. Um, and so we need to maintain the software licenses, um, as well as as planned for the four bu-buses this year. We were able to reduce one bus, uh, during our reopening, and, um, so far this year, we have not had to add that bus back. Um, so far, and we're, we're, we're in March, we're doing well. But if you look, two hundred thousand dollars alone is contracted for tuition and transportation for the two outplaced students. Um, and, uh, those costs and increases, um, from the two, um, outplacement facilities, um, it's a contract, so there is, it's non-negotiable for us on our end.
So, so the budget is really changing because you expect to go back to the full budget requirement for next year?
Yes.
That the essence of that, okay.
So you see the long-term changes here. They really, and these include the outplacements, they really haven't changed much. But I can tell you that this proposed budget year and last year, um, included the two students. If you go further back, you see a dramatic increase from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. There were not two outplaced students there. So you, you, you know, it, it, yeah, I'm sorry, from, yes, in two thousand eighteen, there weren't two outplaced students. Um, when you get to twenty twenty, you do have two outplaced students. And so that's the significant difference there. But from last year's budget to this year is not as significant. The two students remain outplaced. Uh, the six hundreds and the eight hundreds here, um, in terms of the six hundreds, this is instructional supplies, textbooks, nurses' supplies, tech items, the heating oil. Um, we do have locked-in, um, prices for some of these things. Um, the electricity facility and again, and I will, I know cuz you're gonna ask, um, I will find out the breakdown of that forty-five thousand, but there were forty-five thousand dollars, um, uh, that of expenses that were paid that went back to the nineteen twenty. Um, twelve K and heating oil price increase, uh, is also built into this.
We're expecting heating oil prices to go up. I mean, they've been at historic lows. I would have thought we would have signed a contract that would have provided for less cost next year. Maybe not?
Um, well, from last year's, in terms of what they actually spent with the savings of being closed to this year. So not necessarily that it's an all-time high price, it's that we were closed in terms of, uh, March, uh, which we still would have been heating. Um, and so I, I, again, I, cuz I know you're gonna ask, I will get the forty-five thousand dollar expense breakdown for the six hundreds.
Okay.
So, and my apologies on that. I should have asked more.
We've got about a fifty thousand dollar difference if you take out the, uh, heating oil, so, yeah.
And in the, uh, and I'll get you the price for lock-in as well. Um, and the increase in, um, the diesel fuel for buses, cuz I I don't know what our, our increase was there, so I will get that for you.
Can't control that one very much.
Yeah. Um, in the eight hundreds here, um, this was one of the areas that the, um, board had decided to take out, um, what was in here, uh, which were the educational field trips. And so, um, we wind up then, um, with a, a deficit there of, uh, or a negative increase of three point seven two. Um, and it's just the maintenance of the professional dues, um, and entry fees for students are gone now. The long-term changes to the six hundreds, as I said, we'll look at that forty-five thousand encumbered for the previous year, find out exactly what that is. Um, and this is the area that, um, is most directly benefits the classrooms. It's the most volatile for this year. Um, because potentially, there could be losses for outside funding. So although we don't see a, a huge increase, um, the, uh, classroom supplies and instructional supplies are not generally something that we could say we potentially would get a grant for this year. Um, and so that one thing there, uh, is one that, you know, always makes me a, a little bit nervous, you know, going forward to make sure that we've budgeted correctly for it, um, to make sure that, um, th-those are covered. Uh, and again, you know, this year, we do have in terms of, uh, a little bit less in the way of um, consumables and books and a little bit more in the way of media, technology, and licensing. Long-term, uh, look at the eight hundreds. Again, this number is very comparable to last year because last year, the students also did not have the field trips. So, uh, in the board taking out that in my original budget, um, it stays comparable to last year. These years here had the, um, field trip expenses in there. So we go back to this one. Now, we go back to this one here at the end. Um, you know, the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar increase, um, I will make sure that I provide uh, the questions that Diane asked about the breakdown in the three hundreds and the savings itself, the hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that was encumbered for the year before. I will get a breakdown of exactly what that was. Um, and in looking at the, um, in the six hundreds and looking at the, uh, heating prices, I will provide that for you as well. So when we look at it in picture view here and pretty view, we're almost done, I promise. Um, as with any budget, we know that when we look at the blue section here, and when we look at the green section here, um, of any proposed budget, these really are, are the salaries and benefits. As Eric had said earlier, um, so much of a budget is really non-negotiable. And in a year like this, where we've had a record two contracts, uh, that we've already settled there, um, that's adds up to about seventy-five point eighteen percent. When we take into consideration in terms of our educational budget that the town, um, I know, uh, does, does not have there, when we take into consideration the additional contracts for transportation and tuition, which is this red section here, now we're up to about eighty-four point three-five percent of the budget. And so the only things really for us to have gone through, um, in terms of, um, fine-tooth comb, uh, as a board, was for us to look at the three hundreds that we mentioned. We wanna look at the breakdown there. Um, the five hundreds, and that added up to us taking a look at about six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and looking at the flexibility there, uh, in making sure that, um, you know, w-we, we can get the best price in there for everything and make sure things are covered. I know it looks like a significant number when we compare and we just say over six percent. Um, you know, th-the one thing to consider is that we were very lucky, um, that we did have a business manager that was able to move things around at that time when we didn't have any additional, um, rainy day funds. I know, I think Eric called them before. He said, we raided a couple of other funds. Uh, we didn't have that ability, so it was moving around from one line item and object to another. And Laura, thank goodness, had done a very good job of that. Um, we did not have to ask for additional funding. We were also able to get a small amount of, of the funding through the Corona Relief and Esser. Um, and we were able to take some of that money that would have been returned to the town at the end of the year, as you said, Mark. Um, and while we were closed and, and moved that around to cover some of the other expenses. Um, and we were also lucky this year that the Health Insurance Consortium, um, locked us in at three point two, cuz we were originally looking at closer to six percent. One of the things I wanna point out, cuz I know someone, you know, I'm sure is thinking, well, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money. When we look at these other adopted budgets, um, all the way back to two thousand, uh, fourteen, um, you know, our student population has changed. However, if we go back and use a number from two thousand nineteen here, we see, see that we still have roughly the same number of kids in the building that we did have in the eighteen, nineteen school year. And that adopted budget, if we look, is only three thousand and two hundred and forty-three dollars difference. Overall, in the end, you know, with what we are going to spend and not get reimbursed for. So I, I think that, you know, it's, it's, it, it is difficult. It's tough. And I know that. And I know that we've gone a number of years. I think there's one more slide here. Um, a number of years, uh, where we, in fact, um, you know, were able to make it through bare bones without asking for the additional expenditures. And we, we just are at that point where we are bare-bones at this point in terms of staff. And, um, you know, I do believe going forward, it's a good investment for us to make sure, uh, that we service all the needs of our students so that we don't have long-term costs. Um, that hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of additional expenses that were incurred. Mark, I will get you, uh, the, the exact breakdown of exactly where they were. Um, and if those expenses were added, they potentially would have gone over budget, um, if school had been open for the I'm sorry? So I wanna show you the three-year object view here, um. Uh, there's two ways of, for us to look at it, and they are attached on here. Um, the salaries on the top there show the increases from the nineteen budget and unaudited actual to the current budget and then the proposed for the one hundreds, the separation there, the two hundreds and the three hundreds.
So if you can hold on just a second there, Valerie. So, um, well, before we go on to the three hundreds, um, just looking at the salaries, it looks like support staff. You know, I still don't really understand how we ended up with a three point nine-nine percent increase when the contract was only two point something. And again, we're retiring an experienced teacher and moving a, a less experienced, somebody lower in the pay scale into that position. And maybe I'm just not getting it, but I, I, I didn't really understand that overall, uh.
Mark, because it's not just the teacher's contract that's affected in there, it's the non-certified employees.
Right. Are they making eight percent more per contract?
Pardon?
How, how does that average out to three point nine-nine percent? So that's, that's what I don't really
Cuz the teachers are two point five percent and the non-certs are another two point five to three percent.
Well,
Depending on how it averages out.
So that should average to less than three percent is what I'm saying. I mean, yeah, it depends on what the weighting is, right?
Right, not necessarily too, because, um, and again, we can't speak too much to the contract, as you understand, Mark, cuz it's not finalized yet. But that contract was a twenty-twenty contract on through to twenty-twenty-four. So, um, we do have to take into consideration that, um, we're already almost at the end of year one and will be moving then into year two with that contract. So unlike the teachers that went two point five and then three, three, and three, um, it, it may not work that way with the, um, non-certs. And again, we're not finalized with it. It's not ratified. Um, so, uh, we may this year have a, a, a much more substantial increase uh, for this particular year with them, um, into the second year. And it should be only, only another month before we're done with that contract, I assure you.
Yeah, and I don't wanna belabor. I just, uh, not clear to me, so I could take time to look at it more clearly later, and we can ask more questions if we need to.
Okay. Yeah. Um, so so I'm sorry, were there any other questions on the?
Yeah, and then the, the question Diane was asking earlier is near the bottom under three hundred professional, the technical services, the third, uh, well, it's actually the fourth row, I guess, in that professional educational services. So what I think Diane was pointing out is that's the line item where you're gaining about nineteen thousand in that thing. I think that's what you were trying to point out then, Diane. Is that correct?
Correct. I was just trying, what's driving that increase?
Yeah. So it looks like the, you know, it's the physical therapy, OT, occupational therapy, social worker, special ed director.
Direct special education services, yes.
So you're basically expecting an increase in there?
Yes.
Okay. Any particular reason, I guess, would be probably what Diane was getting at?
That would be IP-related and the newly identified students from preschool that are moving up with their
Did you say IEP-related?
IEP-related.
Okay, okay. I thought you said IT-related.
Related services.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think most people, a lot of people probably understand what that is, but that's, uh, there's basically an individualized plan that is contractually required, you know, based on their students' needs, so. Okay. Diane, did you need anything more in there for now?
No, so, so we, so make sure I understand that even though we don't have additional students, we have additional students coming in with more needs. Is that correct?
I mean, it's not necessarily even new students, Diane. Um, it could change from one year to another. So you could have a, a child, for example, your own child. And I'll give you this just as an example, um, that, you know, may not have required speech and language services last year, and now they do. Um, um, every year, uh, there's an annual meeting that takes place to determine the needs of the students. Um, and then every three years, uh, there's a triennial review where we test those students and then we establish their needs from there. So, um, it could be the same students, existing students that are here. It's not necessarily just new students coming in, Diane. It could be the existing students, and these are the, um, potential changes to the needs of the students that we currently have in addition to, uh, new.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? In addition to, I know you want the breakdown, Diane, and I will get that for you. Okay, here. Um, to the four hundreds, the five hundreds, and the six hundreds. And these are the easier way, but then we've got the twelve-page individualized, um, line item as well. And it tells you what function to refer to.
I have one question. When you get to the larger page with the more detail, how do I know when I'm looking at the more breakdown detail with all the, the general ledger numbers, how do I know which numbers roll up into these objects of four hundred, five hundred, six hundred?
But when you're looking
My question exactly there.
So, so, um, I'm sorry, would Diane ask that question?
Yep.
Okay, Diane, when you're, when you're looking at that general fund, the long one with the, um, the individual, I think it was like fifteen pages. You just, okay, so just, uh, for example, let's just pick one page. Um, what page? Would you like middle?
Well, it's just, we can just go to the first page if you want.
Okay, hold on. Well, actually, right now, we're, uh, uh, on my screen, we're looking at four hundreds. So if you look, for example, at
Trying to look at the GL numbers and trying to equate how to, where's the object?
Are you, is, is on, on this, uh, on the bottom now. Page what of eleven?
Let's say page two of eleven.
Okay, so if you're on page two of eleven, what you're looking at, a whole bunch of numbers there.
Yeah.
On the, um, left-hand side, so you see, for example, on the very top of that page, you see how it says one thousand and it says instruction?
Yep.
Okay, then underneath that, you see that one dash zero zero two dash one oh one dash one thousand dash zero 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 teachers?
Yep.
That number right there is, if you look up on the screen, is right here. Then there's a subsequent, cuz this is more detailed, breakdown of that, and what you see Then there's a subsequent, because this is more detailed, breakdown of that. What you see is preschool teachers, uh, a. Instructional assistance, pre-K instructional, what you're looking at is teachers there in that one thousands down.
So basically, the third. Set of digits, that one oh one is indicating that it's part of the one hundred object. And then anything that's two twenty, two thirty, two forty would be part of the two hundred object.
And it's not until you get to um, page four. That you then see the tail end of all of those individual um. The components of that fund, where you then see it ends. On page four, it says, under the preschool dues and fees. A thousand instruction, and then there are your total costs. So what those two pages did was break down that instruction section. And then the next section, the.
But they're, they're, they're allocated differently in your previous slides by this object category we're using, right?
Because this is just more detailed. So that's why it's, it's more difficult for someone to look at this sometimes, I think, than it is for this when they want an overall picture, and these are specifics. So for example, you know.
But not all the object one hundreds are grouped together in this detail, is what I'm saying. You have to kind of look at them in each different section, right?
Right, because these are, right, because these are more specific. This one thousand is instruction. So it's anything that falls under instruction, the teacher's salary that falls under instruction, the supplies for music that fall under instruction. Um, the supplies for third grade that fall under instruction. It's everything that falls under instruction.
Right. So do all the board members kind of understand that structure?
I'm not following it. So I'm not able to identify what detail rolls up into what.
So let me give you a perfect example. Um, one employee um, that we have here, Diane Kane. Diane Kane is the administrative assistant. And because she actually gets paid half of her salary. Out of the special ed budget, because she's the special ed administrative assistant. When you look at special ed, there's going to be a line item that has that for her. And then the other half is located in administrative costs. So this one is more difficult because this separates it out into um, more detail.
Right. Separates it out separate different.
What I'm trying to understand. I want to be able to look at, say, let's take the three hundred series. And I want to be able to go to the detail and see what items make up the three hundred series in the detail.
Everything in that list in those subsequent detail pages that has a third set of digits that starts with a three, is what I can understand.
Right.
So then I have to go to the third set of digits and look through the entire thing to look for the three hundreds. If I had this in Excel spreadsheet, I could do it myself, but.
I asked Valerie about that, but she didn't really have access to that.
Well, let's hope, let's hope, Mark, after March, when we have our new system that's coming in, that that'll be, that'll be easier to do. Okay, so there actually were two last lines here um, that I actually had to cut off to the right because it just added things up across in Phoenix. So, but yes, those, those numbers there are a more detailed view of what we're looking at when we look at this, which is why. I know some people prefer to look at it this way. Some people prefer, I'm going to go down to another, some people prefer to look at it this way, just the whole object here. Some people prefer to look at it this way. So Diane, this one right here. Would be the one you'd want to look at. Do you see my screen right now?
Yep.
So if you, for example, I know you said, I want to see what the three hundreds are. But this one would be, I want to see everything that falls under the category of instruction. If it falls under the category of instruction, it could be those top four things in the one hundreds. It could be the number two for the benefits. It could be the number uh, the two threes. It could be the two hundred. All of those things. Um, are categorized for instruction under special education here. We specifically take out the teachers that fall under special education in that one oh one section there. Our special ed costs that are not covered by grants for paraprofessionals are here. Substitutes, the summer school support staff. So all of these expenses here. We say in this last column here for the proposed, we say four hundred and sixty-nine thousand and nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars is specifically. Special education costs when you take into consideration outplaced students and their um. Expenses when we take into consideration our support staff in the building that's here for special education. When we take into consideration. So all of these things right here are solely special education costs to us. When we look here. In the twenty-one twenty section, just underneath that, this might be kind of what you were asking before. Um. These are the estimated costs for next year, specifically for our social work services that we have through AHM. That's contracted, by the way. Um, and just shared service. Our psych services, speech and language, OT, and then you'll see there's nothing in there currently for PT. Um, because we don't have any students whose um, IPs require us to have PT right now. So there's where you can get a little indication, Diane, of where the increase is. Um, in terms of uh, psych services, is about a five thousand dollar increase from last year to this year, that this next coming year. Um, speech and language, those services are not expected to go up, which is why it's at thirty-eight thousand. Um, on the top, by the way, I know social work services is like, wait a minute, why are you only at seven hundred? That was a contract, so that was one of that hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar um prepaid costs. We knew that we had to pay AHM. So we pay them between forty and fifty thousand a year, depending on the services that are required for our students. So the first row showed you that it used to be forty-one thousand. And then last year, it didn't go up to eighty-five thousand. In fact, in the spring, we paid both. The second and the third column, all with the money from the year before. And now we're anticipating uh, about fifty thousand for next year.
So when I look at that. That column that you're talking there, when it says current budget twenty twenty-one. And there's seven hundred dollars in there, I'm assuming that you budgeted for twenty twenty-one, seven hundred dollars.
Nope.
Is that accurate?
That, nope, that was where I showed you in the three hundreds at the beginning. What happened was, if you can see my cursor. There was forty thousand dollars that was budgeted in there. And in the spring, when we closed down. That was paid for. That's why this is eighty-five and that's forty-one. That was prepaid with that extra money from the spring.
Right, but your, your header says current budget, so.
Right, that's what.
The actual budget should have been forty thousand, right? But you're, you're expecting the cost to be only seven hundred for this year. Is that what you're saying?
Because we're not at the end of the year. At the end of the year, um, it probably wouldn't say, this is where we currently are in the budget. We've only, we've only.
So that's year to date spend?
Yeah, so that's not budget then. That would be year to date spend. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's confusing. Yeah, that's not really the budget.
And that hundred and eighty-nine thousand thing, you know, was, was thrown off a little at the beginning. Um, and so I'll get that from.
Current budget column means that's what we spent year to date through what, December, January, what?
Um, that's where we are now. It's not that unaudited end of the year actual. This, when it says actual at the end of the year, it will be different. But for here, it won't change, Diane, because it was prepaid. Eighty-five thousand dollars was an actual payment for the nineteen twenty year. Because if you looked at the, the budget there, it was budgeted for forty-one, but they paid the forty-one plus prepaid the contract for this year.
But the actual budget for last year that was approved is by the town was.
Forty-one.
Forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
In twenty.
But that says, that's nineteen twenty. I'm looking for twenty twenty-one numbers.
You, you want to know?
So I'm looking, when I look at that, that twenty twenty-one column, I'm assuming. That that's what we currently budgeted for, for this year. And if that's not a true statement, then I'm kind of screwed.
No, and that, and that's where it got confusing because the prepayment occurred with that money that was there in the spring. The, the former business manager said, listen, we know the money is here now. We know these are bills that are going to have to get paid. We don't know what's going to happen with the closure of the school. We don't know what's going to happen with any additional revenue funds. So she took that extra amount in the spring. And said, we're going to pay the bills that we know have to get paid regardless of what happens. And so that's why it was not budgeted for eighty-five thousand. It was in the forties. And the forties got paid as well as prepayment for this year. That's why those numbers look skewed in about four places. Because she prepaid a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars worth of bills. This was one of them. Because she knew that wouldn't change because we had a contract with AHM. And so that amount was going to be the contracted amount that we had to pay.
And so, so really, that. Twenty twenty-one current budget column is really the current budget. Because if you look at the grand total, that's the current budget for this year. It's not year to date spend.
It means that in, it built into that eighty-five, we paid that contract. So this would be over and above what we already paid them prepaid them. This would just be the only other additional cost for this year.
So what we actually did is for that budget year, we only budgeted seven hundred dollars because we paid it, paid it from the previous year.
Um, well, yes and no. It, the, remember, the budget would have been presented in January or February. It would have been approved in the spring. And then in, you know, um, the end of June or July, when she paid this bill, I don't know the date that she paid this bill before I came aboard. Um, that would have been paid with last year's money. So um, I I'll get you the number for what this year's budget actually did say. That she paid the bill for.
So. Well, I'm assuming that's what it is because the grand total is the actual budget number for the current year, because I remember proving that number.
I will get that number for you. That consistently in the forties to fifties.
Excuse me, can I interrupt?
Sure, Linda.
Go ahead.
I just want to mention, you've said it a couple of times, and my husband happens to be president of the Andover Hebron Marlboro Youth Services. It's not a contracted service. Andover Hebron Marlboro is our youth service agency. And on top of that, since it's a nonprofit, the three towns, Andover, Hebron and Marlboro, pay. When it is divided between the towns, they pay less than like forty percent of AHM's total budget because of their grants. And their fundraisers.
I don't understand what you mean. We have a person that services the needs of our kids that comes here a certain number of hours a week.
Right.
Sherry Rivard. So we have a contract to have Sherry Rivard be the one that fulfills our social work.
It's not a, I I don't believe, there is not a contract with AHM. You, there's a billing, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure there's not a contract because it's our youth service agency.
We, we do have a contract for um, Sherry Rivard.
But it's a contracted, it's a contracted service, right? I mean, I think we're just getting into semantics here. So we have to pay for her services based on our agreement with AHM.
Correct. Um, we absolutely have that service, you know. Contracted, you know, with them based on the, the, the number of hours during the course of the year. Um, I don't know if Mr. Brighty is on. Hey, John, is, is that contract, what, what month was that contract signed? Are you on?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Um. When you say what month was it signed in, you mean last spring?
Going for this school year.
Um, we renew the contract every, we, we renew it every spring. I'm not exactly sure when it gets signed off on. We look at the service needs, we look at um, our student population, and then we come to an agreement in terms of. How many days, how many hours that we require. Um, and there's other things that are included in that. There's some uh. Some health education that also comes through AHM. Uh, so there's, there are like. Three main components uh, of service that we, that we receive from AHM. In the course of a year. But the, the primary one is the uh, the school social worker.
And I know we haven't, Mark, the reason why uh, I I asked for his assistance is I know we haven't received or talked about a contract. For me to sign going into next school year yet. So I know it has to be in April, May, June or July that that contract is signed for next year. Uh, because it was also put into effect prior to me coming. So I'm not sure which month it is, but um, you know, that is. That is when it is a contract that is signed.
Okay, I thought I was mistaken. Okay.
That's okay, Linda. So, so yeah, this is, this is the comparison by function and department. Um, and again, those numbers on the left would be the ones that you would track on the eleven pages that we get to here on the bottom. So. Some people just do, you know, prefer to look at it this way, so that it's all kind of together. Um, you know, mixed in together here. Um, for example, as I said, um. You know, there, there would be some split. Um, when you look at particular salaries, if they're covered half by special ed and half by administrative or management, they wind up in two separate sections there. Um, so this is just another way to look at it by comparison and function. So if there's any questions, I know it's in your packet there. If there's any questions on specific ones, please let me know.
Okay, thank you very much, Valerie.
And then, you're welcome. And then, as I said, this one is the one that I know is tougher. For people to look at, especially because it's little there, but those numbers there are going to equate to, as I said, instruction. Right there, and then those particular numbers that you go through, you can find them there. And those, and this, I I actually put this here so that you can see, this is the approved twenty twenty-one and the um, adjusted, and then this is the proposed for this year.
Can you explain the term adjusted budget?
Um. Well, there's adjusted budget based on what they actually wound up um, spending at the end of the year. So like, if you looked here, this was actual and adjusted, that's where she's going to have her um, changes. If there were transfers from one section to another, and there needed to be an adjustment during the course of the year. Um, something might have been taken out of one section if they didn't need it. Um, and moved to another section. Uh, I'll think of an example uh, last year when they knew they weren't going on field trips in the spring.
So these are internal, internal changes to the budget that were made um, by Laura, Sally or, or yourself or whoever, based on the.
Um, so you'd have to give me a specific one here.
Well, I'm just saying, you had, if you, if you made changes, you have an original approved budget that the board have added approved. And then there's a dollar amount, and then it, I don't think it really is that material, but then the adjusted budget is. At some point, you realize you really don't need that much money in this account, but you're going to be over here. You make some adjustments to the.
Right, here's one, Mark. I know, for example, last year, um, so I'm trying to find one here for you. Um, here's one that it was uh, right here, approved for a hundred thousand and adjusted to one eighty-five right here. If you look, see where it says outplacement and special ed. Um, uh, there was a student that they were um. At the start of the year, when they originally budgeted, that uh, particular child, they had not budgeted for them to be placed out.
Right.
The original budget was a hundred thousand dollars. During the course of the year, then, that student went out um, to the placement. Uh, for the trial period, they determined that that was a proper placement. And then they had to take that money from someplace else. And adjust this line item and put it in there because they needed to have the money to pay for the difference for the rest of the year for that particular student. So that would be an example of where.
No, I understand the concept. I just. Wanted to make sure that that's what we were looking at, that there's some internal adjustment made after the original budget was created. It's not necessarily the final numbers or whatever, but there was some adjustment made. And that may be why we're seeing that seven hundred in that number. Whereas the original would have been forty thousand, but at some point Laura maybe made that seven hundred, knowing that she'd already prepaid it. She took care of it. But that would have happened after the original budget adoption. So. There's, there's different ways to approach it. Some, some organizations, businesses would leave the budget where it is, and then you're just going to have variances that you explain. Um, in this case, you know, you adjust the budget internally so that you kind of know where you are on target. That's, it's okay. It's fine to do it that way. Just wanted to make sure I understood that's what's happening.
This is actually the line that Diane was referring to, right here. Do you see my cursor? So last year, the approved twenty twenty-one budget for social work services was forty-two thousand five hundred. And actually, it said five hundred here and not seven hundred. I'd have to find out where the two hundred dollar um, difference is.
The total.
Um, right, but if you look now at the nineteen twenty actual, do you see the nineteen twenty budget itself was forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-four? And then the actual here for nineteen twenty jumped up to eighty-five thousand two hundred and four.
Yeah.
Um, and this is where Laura moved that number from here over to here.
And Val, I know that you said that you're going to provide the detail on the one eighty-nine. I've desperately been looking back. To find all of my old board minute notes and whatnot, and I have not been able to, to find. to find all of my old board minute notes and whatnot, and I have not been able to to find it. But I do know that another significant payment that we made was to purchase Chromebooks. Because during the pandemic, we wanted to have a one-to-one ratio for every student in and in Andover Elementary to have a Chromebook. Um, and that was a significant expense that we moved to last year's budget in preparation for being able to send every student home with a Chromebook during this year. And I know that was, I I don't know what that expense was, but I know that was a major expense from last year.
Yeah, I'm sure Laura can come up with it. That's exactly the kind of detail that kind of helps us understand the differences, so.
Well, that's it. That's the one eighty-nine that Valerie's going to provide you with. But I, I, I'm trying to recollect in addition to the fifty-three thousand that we've already noted, I know there was a significant expense that was made to provide for Chromebooks for our students. And Val will get you the one eighty-nine breakdown. I just wanted to add in that I recalled that that was certainly part of the major expense that moved to last year's budget. In addition to paying for A H M, in addition to the fifty-three thousand that we've already discussed. Thanks, sorry.
That's okay. No, so A H M, we've already identified one of them, but yes, I will certainly get the rest. Um, for you. And so, yes, so you know, when you go, this is our proposed, and you can look at the approved, the adjusted. And then if you go back to the actual here, that's where I'm going to pull those numbers from with the help of Laura to be able to see where those differences were. Okay, and this, there's obviously eleven pages of this that go through all of the um, particulars there. Um, and I will pull, pull those for you. So, and that's everything in there. And then it moves on to the next one.
Okay, that's a lot to go through.
I know. I'm so sorry for everybody, but
Do not apologize. That's why you're here and and we wouldn't have wanted any less, uh, I think. Um, thank you. Thank you, Valerie. So board, this is your opportunity to ask any last questions, general or specific uh, to Valerie unless we
I have a question.
Yep, Louise, go ahead.
Okay, Valerie, um, going back to the screen that has all the different grade levels and the classes, changes in classes. I noticed for third grade um, back in October twenty twenty, you only had one class with eighteen kids. And you're just making an increase of two more students for twenty twenty-one, but adding another, another class. Um, is that necessary for two additional students?
Remember, we're looking at different kids then. Um, you have to compare. Hold on one second and I'll go back to that slide for you. We have to remember that every year, I'm sorry, is it Louise that's speaking?
Yeah, it's Louise.
Sorry, Louise. Um, you have to remember that you have to move that up one line item from one year to the other to see the count of kids. So
Right.
Hang on one second.
But it did say twenty kids for the twenty twenty-one year.
Hold on. I'm trying to get us to that particular slide and I apologize.
No matter how you bake it, you know, unless there's some specific
Are you looking
Students involved, you went from seventeen students in a class to eighteen students in the class to ten students in a class.
Hold on one second.
I think that's kind of what Louise is probably doing.
Now we're looking at this. So, so Louise, normally, like I said, they would move, they would, they would just move up. So here we had for first grade, we had two classes of eleven kids. That's going of, you know, twenty-two total. That's going to move up to be the third grade class of this year.
Right.
Um, and so it's, it, there's no change from this year to next year. Um, where we see the change, and this is where, like I said, we're utilizing the same number of teachers. Um, we have currently two classes of fifth grade. We have twenty-two fifth graders. The decision had to be made. Do we take two classes for next year because we already have two fifth grade classes? And move them up to two classes of sixth grade because that's the normal progression normally. And that's where I made that decision, Louise, to say, nope, twenty-two, twenty-two in the sixth grade class is fine. Where we need to look at the potential gap, the potential learning loss, the potential fact that we had the um, eight incoming kids and the significant needs in the preschool was not to offer. Because this is would be what people would have expected. Well, there's two fifth grade. We're just going to have two sixth grade next year. Move those kids up. And instead, I'm, that's why I said I'm, I'm not afraid of larger classes. We needed that to be here.
Valerie, do this move with the students?
Um, that's a good question. People make that assumption. Um,
Well, that's the way you kind of just explained it. So it didn't really
The number, I mean, the, the, the ratio of teacher kids. Um, and so I'm, I'm certain that the um, two fifth grades, we're assuming that they would have two sixth grades. What we plan on doing is um, like a middle school model, Mark, um, you know, there, there won't always be twenty-two kids in a class um, or eighteen or eighteen with a middle
Or eleven.
Uh, in, in the upper grades where we're good, only going to have one right now. Um, there will be um, the changing of classes. We're going to utilize those current staff to do some changing of classes where that will help us to address the needs of some of those kids. Um, you know, if there's a need for a, a, a small uh, math group, for example. Um, you're familiar with the middle school model where if they change classes, then you can have one, let's say math class that's taking place that's slightly larger than another one, based on the need of the students. Um, so the current fifth grade classes are eleven and eleven. We will be moving to one sixth grade class of twenty-two. For the fourth grade class right now, um, you look and you see, hold on. Um, one class there of eighteen, they're going to move up to one class of eighteen. You see one third grade class of eighteen, they're going to move up to one class of eighteen. You follow me?
I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think, I think Louise's point, though, is it, is it really makes sense in a third grade to go from one class of eighteen to two classes of twenty?
So we mentioned earlier, and I know um, I had provided um, you know, some, some reading for the board when we had talked about this originally. Third grade, for anybody who is not familiar with the curriculum in elementary school, third grade is that first year that we start standardized testing. Third grade curriculum wise is the year, I can stop sharing this now. Um, third grade is the year that people um, expect that all your third graders are readers. Um, the curriculum is, is a, it's a, it's a very intensive one in third grade to make sure that, that that's that benchmark year for kids uh, that we've got very proficient readers, that we make sure that any of the um, the gaps, the learning loss, things like that are to the side, and we get into more content area in fourth, fifth, sixth grade and and the goal for middle school. So that is, I would say kindergarten and um, third grade are probably those optimal years in elementary school. Um, for curriculum and and benchmarks. And that's why when we give the, the S back and the, the state assessments um, nationally, um, they begin in third grade. Um, and so uh, do I anticipate after next school year that we'll need that? We hopefully won't. Hopefully, at that point, we, we won't need that. Um, but uh, those were too tough. I, I, I definitely knew that we could do sixth grade um, with the staff, with the curriculum, with the model that we're going to use um, with that one class. And again, I don't want anybody to think that I am a proponent solely of looking at very small class sizes. I think there is an advantage to looking at this seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two kids. Um, and I'm all in favor of looking at that. And in a normal year, I'm not sure that I would have necessarily looked at third grade in kindergarten and said, we've, we've got to make these adjustments. This year, they are necessary. And they may not be necessary going forward. And at that point, I'm certainly in favor of increasing those class sizes.
Louise, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, just, just real quick, you know, a, as somebody who has somebody in second grade right now struggled with online learning, who I am actually vaguely concerned about. Uh, I just want to echo that uh, as a parent uh, in that situation, like, I get it. Uh, my second grader is not my fifth grader. I, I have a second grader and a fifth grader. My fifth grader is my cerebral, hand her a book, she'll curl up in a corner and happily read it and whatever. My second grader is a much more difficult challenge and she needs one of the best things that's happened to her this year is the fact that AES was open. Uh, and then she was able to go in person. That was huge. Her online learning was kind of a joke. It, it didn't work for her at all. Um, so she's back now and that's fantastic, but I gotta tell you, she's and I think her teacher would agree with this, not that she's behind in a sense of her peers because they're all behind in a lot of ways, uh, in reading in particular. Um, so I just want to say from my own experience that I get that that, you know, that that particular grade level, that particular cohort of kids may need a little handholding for a bit to catch them up. And I don't think it's crazy for someone to say that they need that. Uh, I just, I've seen it personally. That's
Thank you. We don't need it forever. And I am here to tell you, we don't need it forever. I will be that first person to say to you, you know what? We're good. And one of the indicators that we're going to be able to use to see when we've, we've met that is um, normally we have the spring benchmark assessments. We have S back. We didn't have that last year. Um, and third grade is that first year that they take it. So normally, the spring of second grade, the fall of third grade, all the way through until the spring, when they take that test again, they're doing test prep. And they're familiarizing themselves with um, all of the concepts of reading. So that by the end of third grade, they all kind of are at that even playing fields to head to fourth grade. And so, Mr. England, you know, you, you have a second grader now. Um, if they were in second grade last year, going into third this year, they would have missed all of that. Um, and so I, I've been looking nationally, just to see if it's not just a Connecticut thing. Nationally, there are places that did give um, some sort of a benchmark assessment. New York City was one of them when the kids returned um, to school this year. Um, and they all failed the third
Yeah.
Benchmark assessment. Um, they, I mean, they just did, and we don't want that to happen to our kids. And so, you know, when, when we're sitting here next year at this same time, I, I, I tell all of you to challenge me on it. Because if we get those scores back and we get the data back and we get the qualitative and quantitative um, data that we need from teachers and from the benchmark assessments, and it's looking good, there will not be a reason to maintain third grade at those small uh, numbers. There just won't be. Um, but this year, and I'm sure you've all seen it in the news, uh, Governor Lamont says, and Biden, uh, President Biden says, we will be doing spring assessments. Um, and so third grade is, is so important, uh, that and kindergarten. And so that's where we chose to push our resources this year um, to those two grades so that all of your children uh, will wind up not experiencing that COVID gap, that learning gap, that deficit. So we'll have a different conversation next year, I assure you, but this year going into the fall, it's, it's, it's definitely something that's needed.
We have further questions for Valerie from the board. I do have one question on your um, presentation, not the, not the presentation itself, but the, the, the budget detail breakdown. Where are the grants shown?
Where are which grants shown?
Grants, where are they shown? In the financial statements. Typically, you would have some kind of incoming offsetting your expenses.
You want to see like the breakdown of the school readiness grant, the breakdown of the smart
Yeah, just basically, are they, are they in there separately? You have separate line items for grants.
Um, there aren't separate line items, but what you'll see is, is that it's not included in there. So, for example, when we had looked at the paraprofessional line item, um, there's a missing salary in there um, in the actual budget portion because um, that salary was covered through grants for the preschool. So it just doesn't
You reduce the budget based on, on that grant. Okay, that's a non-standard way of showing it. Now, to say that I would much rather that you show the full amount, and and maybe the system doesn't allow it, so typically you look
I don't know if the system allows it or not. It's just the past
And next year it won't matter because it's the new system, right? But typically, what you would do is show your expenses, show your expenses, show your expenses, then you're offsetting income revenues. Um, you know, i- if we even call revenues in the town, you know, it could be tax revenue, it could be, it could be permit revenue. In your case, it's grants. The town gets grants also. So it's just, it's just a way to make very clear where things are and where it's coming. Just, just
I apologize for that, Mark. I just follow the template that's been used for the past five years. So I'm writing a note now that, you know,
Long, yeah. The main thing is to understand it in this case. And you know, I, I, I do think that would probably be a more clear way to show the data in the future.
Which is why uh, when we looked at preschool, because the um, the benefits weren't covered by the grant, we kept it in there. Everything else then that was covered by the grant wasn't in the actual budget itself.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I will definitely, I put a note on here to make sure from here going forward that we do show the offset of revenues. Anybody else?
Anybody else from the board? No. Okay, well, I guess at this point then, Valerie, thank you very much. Thank you, Shannon, and the rest of the board members. We appreciate the hard work you've done here. Um, regardless of where this all comes down, and we all know there's different opinions and feelings and emotions and challenges. It's not an easy task and uh, I, I think especially I appreciate your passion for the work you're doing here, all of you. So thank you very much. Okay. So the next item is uh, new business item eight B, which is the town budget discussion. So I'm going to post the question to the board members. Do we want to get into a discussion of this at this point? Do we have specific questions? We do not have a proposed budget yet from the, from the town. We expect that next week. Uh, if, uh, if all is on schedule and it sounded like it was. Um, it's, it's obviously getting late into the evening and we've heard a lot of information tonight, asked some questions. It may be best, in my humble opinion, to let this digest a little bit, uh, give us a chance to absorb it. We may have additional questions for uh, Valerie um, or others uh, asking for clarification. Uh, we can always transmit that via, by a letter, email and and discuss it in one of our special meetings. Um, does anybody have different ideas, feel strongly that they want to discuss the budget at this time?
Mark, can I get like three minutes to talk about that?
I'll give you two minutes and forty-five seconds. How's that, Eric?
Okay, perfect. Let me just share my screen.
Okay. I am, of course, kidding. We'll give Eric all the time he needs.
Sure, yeah. No, I, believe me, it's late for me, too. Okay, so uh, I just want to hit the very highlights. So the, the Board of Selectmen has essentially released the budget to the Board of Finance. If I had my act together, I would have posted it today on the town website. I apologize for not doing that. Um, they have approved sending it to the Board of Finance. So you will have it post haste. In fact, I'll try to get it to you tomorrow. So it's to in your hands. Just real quick, the highlight, the column that's uh, you see my cursor on right now. That is the Board of Selectmen approved budget. So that is what they've passed um, and passed on to you. And I'm going to uh, just uh, so pretty much all the details are here. The thing that is different this year is the Board of Selectmen asked me to pull benefits out of, we had previously a, a column or a section that covered all the benefits for all employees. And they asked us to break that out department by department. So we have changed that this year, and you can see department by department, what our salary costs, what our medical costs are, what our retirement costs are. Um, so, so that's one change in the budget. The second thing is uh, I also in the budget, I show budget total, which is the town budget, the AES budget and the RAM budget as they are today that I know of. So our total budget we're looking at right now is twelve million eight hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. Um, and then below that is the total town budget. That's the portion that, that, that's basically everything other than education, um, which is essentially twenty-seven percent of the total budget. And then I further broke it down into uh, you know, I separated out the capital items and just looked at what is the town general budget? What is essentially the operating budget? What is essentially the operating budget of the town um, and put that column in so you can also look at that. Not going to give you any details about that um. Budget sheet, the bottom line is the budget delivered right now. The biggest difference is that we do not have unexpended fund balance to offset taxation, which we have had. Um, and we've spent down the last three years. The result of that is that um, the estimated. Um, this budget presented is an increase in taxation of basically a million dollars. Round it off, which is about a nine and a half percent increase. However, there was a fairly significant increase in the grand list this year. Um, which means the percent increase in the proposed mill rate is about seven point five nine percent. Which anybody who's gone through budget uh, referendums in the past knows is a very difficult number. To get through uh, on a first or second or third referendum. So that's basically where we are right now. Um, I'm, if you have any specific methodology you want to use to review the town budget. Um, we can go through it line by line if you so desire, or if there are specific things you want to work with. Mark, if you give me a list of how you want to approach this, I will tailor my, you know, what I present to you going forward. And I'll also give you a series of budget summaries that kind of summarize the major changes that occur in this budget. Questions?
Can you make that bottom number a little smaller?
Well. Yep.
It's a little. Magical powers, Eric, can you just?
If you use that zoom function, you know, sometimes that works for you. So, alright.
Yeah, I, I mean, what I would say is from the town perspective, that the town general budget, we are decreasing the town general budget. Um, we are so, you know, basically we're taking one employee back down to part-time that was full-time. Um. You know, and we've decided that we're going to give up a standalone senior services person. And just continue to assign that task to another town employee. Um, you know, again, because we just, you know. Um. So. That's a little bit controversial, but I think, you know, we're gonna deal with it. Um, the, the total town budget, we're looking at basically a two point one, three percent increase in the town's portion of the budget. So. I mean, I think we're, you know, it's more than inflation. Um, but if you look at all that spending, all that spending is basically difference in capital. Um, and last year we trimmed back to get the mill rate under control, we trimmed back. A bunch of capital spending and basically put it off. Um, so now, you know, some of that's coming back in this budget. And that's pretty much where we are in terms of the current budget. Um. There we go.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Yeah, I, I actually like some of the changes the Board of Selectmen's requested. It makes sense to me to see it that way. Or the finance members, do you have any other questions for Eric or input?
More meetings to have a go at me.
Yes, we do.
So I just want to make sure I understand this town general budget slash capital fund, that's just the capital. Expenses in that number.
So if you look at line sixty-eight, that is total budget.
Yep.
The next line down is the total budget minus education.
Okay.
And then the line below that is the total budget minus education. Minus capital funds, capital funding.
Okay, okay.
Got it. So I, I, essentially what I'm doing is I'm kind of presenting the information. And I'll give you summaries that show, you know, where our capital spending has gone over the last ten years. Where our uh, town operating spending has gone over the last ten years. Um, I'll, I'll give you summaries of that. It's not wrapped up in the budget, but I'll, I'll give you that detail. Um, so you have to look at also, so you can kind of understand where we are historically.
Thanks.
Other questions for Eric? Okay, thanks, Eric. It's to know it's there. That, yes, does it say version eight at the top of your uh, screen there? Okay. So I think I saw through version seven, you had distributed. Okay. All right, um, any further discussion on the board for either of the presentations? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the. Uh, next agenda item HC, upcoming budget workshops. Um, I don't think we have any action to take here, just a. Note that Eric, we have a special meeting budget workshops uh, set for Wednesday, March third. And Wednesday, March seventeen, I think everybody's aware of that. So we'll get into some more of the nuts and bolts then. Uh, by then we'll have the town budget to look, uh, look through and uh, I'm sure we'll have questions.
Mark, I just wanted to jump on and let everyone know that um, we've been working on a page, um, just as we did last year for the budget. Um, and we are going to launch that, like Eric said, hopefully tomorrow, we can get all the information on there regarding the town.
Are you talking about like a, a, an input gathering, a feedback gathering page?
Maybe eventually feedback, but more so just like informational right now.
Got it. Okay, so a special page on the web, town, web page, town, town website. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know that it, that is here. Um. Just to provide, you know, the information and so the public can understand what's going on.
It's in one place instead of all the agenda packets and everything. Okay.
Exactly.
Got it. Makes sense. Good. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on those meetings? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to eight Ds, the CIP request for the purchase of the F five fifty pickup. So Eric, this is your presentation there too.
So I would send you the official language from CIP for the motion they made. But Fred has not actually done the minutes for that meeting yet, so I can't give you the exact. But what CIP approved was a recommendation to purchase an F five fifty Mason dump truck. So it's a moderate sized, it's bigger than a, a standard consumer. Uh, pickup truck, but smaller, considerably smaller than a plowed truck. So we had a two thousand and four uh, truck that we were anticipating um, replacing next year. We blew the engine on that um, about a week and a half ago. Um, we know that it's part of, we have that era of diesel engine has, that was some of the first of the pollution control equipment diesel engine. And um, it's not an uncommon problem. Um, in fact, most public works departments are getting away from diesel small trucks. Um, for that reason, um, keeping diesels for the bigger ones, getting rid of diesels for the smaller ones. So we looked at a range of options from uh, trying to source and replace a used engine. Um, but you know, so we had a cost basis for that. We also had a cost basis from the dealer. Um, for what it would cost to replace uh, it with a new engine. Um, from Ford. And then we looked at a series of options to replace the vehicle. Um, we looked very briefly at, at other manufacturers, but they tend to be Ford has. Much better governmental programs than the other manufacturers. So, so buying the Ford seems to be the, the most cost-effective way. Um, one of the issues we've run into right now is um, Ford actually isn't, doesn't have the production lines running. Um, we really can't get two thousand uh, twenty-one models. Um, if we order it, we are stuck with waiting till sometime in March, March till they allow orders again. Um, and then Ford says it's ninety to a hundred and twenty days to get a vehicle and then it has to go to an upfitter. So um, and frankly, it's more expensive to order a twenty twenty-two than it is to buy one of the twenty twenties that's still on the lot. Um, there is one remaining that we can purchase. When we started looking last week, there were two. A municipality in New Hampshire drove down and purchased one of the ones off the lot. Um, we are looking at a possibility that the downside of getting this vehicle is it's red. Um, so it doesn't, it's not going to look like any of our other vehicles. Um, we are looking at, we're, I, I'm trying to negotiate with a Ford dealer in New York State. Um, that has a green one, so it would match, but it doesn't look like, but it's not one that was purchased off of their municipal program. So it's probably going to be enough more expensive that we're not going to want to buy it. So what I would like is uh, first answer any of your questions that you have. Um, you know, I know Mark had asked me like basically what we use it for. Um, and then to see whether the Board of Finance would agree to purchase it now. As opposed to next year when we had planned on doing it with the capital. Um, and then uh, talk about where, what funding sources we can use for that.
So hey. Dave Hewitt, I uh, couple comments on the truck color. I personally don't care if it's red as, as an resident. Uh, second thing is if it has to be green, have you ever looked in vinyl wrapping it?
Well, you know, I, I haven't priced it out, but that is one possibility. Um, honestly, personally, I don't care. Color's not my first concern. Um, you know, I'm more concerned with not having to wait five months to get the vehicle. Um, that's, to me, that's much more of a concern. Um, you know, I looked at it and said, if I could match. The price we can buy it locally for um, out of state and just be out the inconvenience of having to go get it, that would be worth it to me to get a green one. But it's not worth it to me to pay a couple thousand dollars extra um, to get one that's off of their, you know, commercial sales as opposed to their municipal sales. If that answers your question.
Yep.
Eric, if I may, um. This green truck never came up at capital improvements. Uh, cap improvements voted to uh, recommend purchase of the red one. And uh, I don't even know why we're talking about it. Firstly, you know, i- i- if it's red, it'll still run. This, this truck is very important to the town crew because it, it plows the school. More so than the uh, larger trucks and also the fire station and town hall. Um, it's used uh, quite a bit every snowstorm, uh, especially for those uh, those, those three town buildings. So. But cap improvements did uh, did, did approve the purchase of the red one from Columbia Ford, I think it is. So.
Correct.
Just so everybody knows.
And this is also discussed extensively at the Board of Selectmen meeting the other day too.
Kurt, part of the reason why I brought up colors, that there were several Board of Selectmen members that were encouraging me to continue to look for a green unit.
Oh.
And I said I would be willing to do that as long as we could actually find one that matched the specs.
Well, if, if you need to, uh, Dave's got the best idea, wrap it in green.
I'm fine with a couple cans of gray spray paint personally, but you know.
You have a green wrap with flames on the side. Somebody have any other questions uh, for Eric on this? There, there was a fairly detailed write-up in the package, uh, but I know we got discussed quite a bit, uh, the Board of Selectmen, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of questions that came up and. So all of mine were answered there.
Do we need to take action on this?
Well, there's a couple of things we would need to do, I think, Eric, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we, first of all, we don't have the capital, the money in the capital budget for the public works to actually accommodate this. However, there's some unused capital funds that never got transferred previously that were designated to be transferred, so they would need to be transferred, correct, Eric?
Correct.
Yeah, so we had sent around some possible language to do that with the fund numbers.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, so we probably need to transfer those two funds into the public work cap, works capital fund, and then we need to take action to authorize Eric to make the purchase. Anything else, Eric?
Uh, no, and Mark, I sent you the exact language for the motions. Um, you know, which lists out the exact L accounts and how much would be taken out of each one. So which, which was also basically what I put in the uh, in the packet also. So you guys have that info.
Yeah, so I, I did forward that out to the other Board of Finance members. Is anybody have any other questions for Eric or anybody care to entertain the motion or enter the motions? I'm happy to.
I'm, I'm happy to make the motion. I just gotta pull up the uh, requirements. Give me a sec.
Eric, while he's doing that, I have a question for you.
Sure.
In that municipal program Ford has, do they have any financing options?
They do, but their financing options kind of suck. Um. Sorry, that's not the most politically correct thing to say in the meeting, but you know, the, the best they do is somewhere around five and a half percent. Um, and to me, you know, right now, having to pay five and a half percent. Um, you know, when you can come up with the money internally, doesn't really make sense.
And that even like on a three-year term?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
What other options besides Ford financing that does the town have? I mean, I know rates are just ridiculously low. I was just, my thought was if you do it over, say, a short-term three periods, then we don't have to maybe. Move money around, we can just fund those accounts a little bit every year.
But these are dead accounts anyway, dead funds anyway, aren't they? Eric, actually, we need to be moved out somewhere.
Well, so the um, the twenty-three thousand uh, already exists in the Public Works Capital Equipment Fund. That's what's left over uh, from the money we've been funding every year after we paid, bought the used sweeper. Um. The twenty-five thousand, two fifty, two thirty-five. That fund should have already been transferred into the Public Works Capital Equipment Fund. We had kind of agreed to do that last year. That's unfortunately one of the things that I, I put in the bottom of my administrator's report. Basically a note that the uh, Barbara hadn't actually transferred the funds that we had. Uh, that the Board of Finance agreed to transfer last year. So the difference is really about twelve thousand dollars, which I'm just suggesting we take out a town aid road. Um, it's not ideal to spend town aid road on that, but you know. So I mean, i- if the Board of Finance makes a decision that we want to finance it versus uh. You know. Versus purchase it outright, then, then I will certainly pursue that i- if that's, if that's your desire.
Eric, I had one last question. Uh, at the meeting, we did discuss uh, that you were talking to Pucci Truck Sales. As far as taking the older truck without the motor, have you uh, reached any agreement with them on the uh, the older truck?
Yeah, Kuti said he'd give us sixty-five hundred dollars, but I think that's low. Um, because it's got a plow that's in pretty good shape and it's got a functional dump body. And the town about three years ago or four years ago, sandblasted and repainted the body. So I, I mean, I think we're going to end up getting somewhere around ten thousand back for. Our intention is to, to put it up for, you know, basically. Our intention is to, to put it up for, you know, basically put it up for municipal auction. And use them, one of the municipal auction sites.
Okay, so nothing as of yet.
Nothing as of yet. Well, we know we could get sixty-five hundred dollars for it tomorrow. Um, but I think we can do better and it's worth us spending the time to, to try to maximize our return on that.
Understand.
And the other thing, i- if you chose to, we could take the money from that sale. And ordinarily, I would have rolled that money back into the Public Works Capital of Equipment Fund. If the Board of Finance prefers, we could, we could put that back into, uh. Uh, Town Aid Road. Which would, you know, then make it, at the end of the day, we probably would only be taking a couple thousand from Town Aid Road if you're more comfortable doing that.
For a second there, I thought you were going to say painted green, but.
It's always an option. Any other questions or comments? Do you have any motions on this topic?
All right, so I pulled up, um, Eric's suggested motion. So I'll make the motion so we can at least discuss it. His suggestion and I move to transfer L one hundred dash zero zero. Dash thirty-nine, forty-nine dash zero, zero, two. To L dash one hundred dash zero, zero, dash thirty-nine, forty-two dash zero, zero, two. And close fund L dash one hundred dash zero, zero, dash thirty-nine, forty-two dash zero, zero, two. And further, transfer twelve thousand dollars. From L one hundred dash zero, zero, dash thirty-seven hundred dash zero, zero, six. DT slash EF Town Aid Road. To L dash one hundred dash zero, zero, dash thirty-nine, forty-two dash zero, zero, two. Leaving approximately a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars rather in Town Aid Road funds. Um, that was his proposed motion and seems okay to me. So. I shall move.
Eric, did, can you, uh, confirm those are the right account numbers? I, I think that Rob corrected a, uh, uh, repeat of the. In the first motion, I think he's, he's got it right, but there's, uh, in your original write-up, there's a. The first two accounts are the same in the original motion, so just want to make sure we got that covered correctly.
Um. Give me a sec, let me pull up the actual.
It's easy to have your eyes placed over with, so.
Yeah, a lot of numbers today.
Hmm. The individual account numbers are like that.
You know, and we can, uh, we can also, we also have the titles of the accounts.
Yeah, we can just.
Yeah, add that to the motion, the, the, the twenty-five thousand, two fifty-two. And thirty-five cents are in the DT DF Farm Equipment. And the twelve thousand dollars, uh, are in the DT DF Town Aid Road. All moving, you know, both those amounts moving to the Public Works Capital Equipment Fund, which is. Apparently L dash one hundred dash zero, zero, dash three nine, four nine, dash zero, zero, two.
So the, uh. The original due-to-do-from farm equipment fund was L one hundred. Dash zero, zero, dash three nine, four nine, dash oh, oh, two. So that first part is correct. Um, and let me pull up the capital.
You've got the same account number listed for the capital.
Right, I know, which, which means that one's got to be incorrect.
Okay. All right, and yeah, and it's good that we're correcting.
We're gonna just redo this motion then.
And we're gonna probably have to.
Yeah, absolutely. And we just forget what I said.
And the Public Works Capital Equipment Fund is L one hundred. Dash zero, zero. Dash three seven, zero, zero. Dash zero, five, nine.
Okay.
Said three, seven, zero, 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 five, nine?
Correct.
Three, three, seven, zero, zero, dash, zero, five, nine. All right, so it sounds to me like then Rob's motion would read. That we were going to transfer the fund balance of twenty-five thousand, two fifty-two, thirty-five. In L one hundred dash zero, zero, dash three nine, four nine, dash zero, zero, two. The F DT DF Farm Equipment to L one hundred. Dash zero, zero, dash three, seven, zero, zero, dash, zero, five, nine, Public Works Capital Equipment Fund.
Zero, right, yeah, yes, correct.
Um, and we're going to also transfer twelve thousand dollars from L dash one hundred, dash, zero, zero, dash, three, seven, zero, zero, dash, zero, zero, six. That's a DT BF Town Aid Road to L dash one hundred. Dash zero, zero, dash, three, seven, zero, zero, dash, zero, five, nine, Public Works Capital Equipment Fund. So we'll just combine those two motions and I.
Let's, let's just go ahead and, uh, correct my motion to that, I agree.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second to, uh, exactly what Rob had said earlier.
Okay, to the corrected or the, the.
Not, not the original, Kurt, don't do that.
I'll second so we can have discussion.
That's okay.
All right. All right, do we have any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, it passes seven, zero, thank you. Okay, now we have such. So we, uh, effectively transferred these funds. Um, does anybody want to make a motion regarding the purchase or some other alternative approach to the, uh, replacement of the pickup?
So I'll make the motion, I'm going to read it from the email here. My motion to authorize the town administrator to purchase a twenty-twenty-four, whoops. F five fifty pickup with a rugby three-yard dump body and Fisher V plow. Specs as outlined in the budget quote, expenditure not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. This will replace the twenty. Twenty-two thousand eight F five fifty dump truck that has not cost effective to repair.
Okay, thank you Diane, does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Nicely stated Diane, thank you Rob, second. We have any further discussion on this action? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any opposed? Do you have any abstentions? Okay, motion passes seven, zero, thank you. Very good. All right, if we have nothing else on that, and I don't believe we do, let's move on to item nine, which is the approval of the meeting minutes. We actually have two sets of minutes to approve. We have item nine A, the Wednesday, January twenty-seven. Two, zero, two, twenty-twenty-one, regular minute, meeting minutes. Anybody want to make a motion to approve those or have any discussion?
I'll motion.
Okay, Kurt motions to approve the minutes, I know. Louise seconds, thank you. Any discussion? I know I reviewed them and they looked correct to me. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, motion passed seven to zero. We're going to move on to item nine B, which is the meeting minutes from Saturday, January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, special meeting. Anybody want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
If I am, I am, thank you. Anybody second?
I'll second it.
Hey, thank you Louise, any discussion? Again, I reviewed them and I was there and they looked appropriate to me, it was a quick, quick meeting, the one single purpose. Proving the purchaser, okay. All right, all those in favor approving, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions, any abstentions?
Stention, because I wasn't there.
Rob's abstaining. Okay, so motion passes six, zero, with one, one abstention. Thank you. Move on to agenda item number ten, which is liaison reports, I don't know if we have anybody that wants to, uh, report out anything. We already talked about some of the CIP activity. Um, I think Diane, there, we were going to have another meeting of the senior, uh, committee, is that, did that take place?
You're muted.
Yeah, she's trying to get it off.
Unmute, okay. Ha, it's late at night, can't work anything. Um, we had a second meeting, we went over, um. The initial draft drawings of everything with the, uh, Board of Selectmen and gave them the view. Adrian shared his screen, so we kind of walked through that. The next phase now is, in our next meeting, which will be March eleventh, is to really come back to. Um, everyone to do some conceptual drawings. So we'll be coming back to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to ask for money for that. We do have some money put aside in that fund already, so we should have the money to start that initial thing. And we're going to do conceptual drawings before we go full bore, so we can make sure everybody's on board with the concept and what we're going to do. Before we spend any money.
If I recall correctly, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in that fund.
We have like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Four fifty, yep.
Yeah.
Or forty-seven, but.
Not close enough.
Yeah, it's gonna be difficult, huh?
This is a tough budget year, let's keep our numbers straight.
Good to know you're on top of it, Eric.
Okay, thank you Diane. Any other reports or input?
And for the record, the budget proposal, uh, before you. Has a recommendation to add fifty thousand dollars. To basically do, uh, get a lot of the design costs out of the way without touching what's actually in that fund. Uh, the construction funds that are there.
Thank you.
Whether that survives your, uh, your final budget, you know, that's up to you.
Mark, you're muted.
Sorry, I was trying to cover my cough there. Uh, we have nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is board open discussion. Does anybody have anything else to discuss before the board bring before?
Are there any things specific that the Board of Finance members are looking for me for the first budget meeting? Like, is there, what is it that you want to see from me from, for the first meeting? Is there anything in particular?
I, I would personally like to see how this impacts the, the multi-year plan for capital improvements on the roads and other infrastructure. And, you know, I, I obviously haven't looked at the numbers, so, you know, we, we had a plan. We, we had a plan last year too, but of course, things change, so just kind of want to understand where this fits in with that.
And I would like to know what funds we need to expend in the next twelve months. For the next bridge that we have to do.
S- okay, so, I mean, I can tell you that, um. We are going to be, with a little bit of luck, we will be starting construction. Um, about fourteen months from right now. If that puts it, so, so in, we're not on the hook for any design costs. Um, so our first real expense at a, as a town is when construction starts. Um, and then, um, I would anticipate the, all of the town's portion. To be expended in the first, uh, about six months after that. So by the end of next summer, we will have expended, uh. We, we will have been on the hook for the full four hundred thousand. With the understanding that we're going to use the, uh, fund balance. Um, as our reserve, because we're going to be looking at individual bills. Because basically what has to happen is, we, the contractor does the work, we pay the contractor. The federal government rebates us. So at some point during that, we will be out, uh, awaiting reimbursement. You know, because it takes more than a month and you can anticipate our individual monthly bills. You know, are going to be in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range, so we're pretty quickly going to get to the point. Where, you know, we've, you know, spent six or seven hundred thousand dollars and just haven't gotten rebated that yet. If that makes sense.
It does to me, it's going to happen, it seems appropriate. Anything else or any, uh, input for Eric for his presentation or discussion at the next, uh. Net or the budget meeting, social meeting?
May- maybe an idea, Eric, of, uh, what grants we're looking to get for the town?
Good.
I think that would help.
Okay, if we hear nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is, uh, item twelve. This is public speak, we have an opportunity for, for those of you who are persistent and then have the endurance to stay with us. Uh, for one of our longer meetings, so go ahead and open it up to public speaking again.
Right, here we go, so first up, we have Shannon Loudon.
Excellent, so I will not prolong it, thank you very much, Board of Finance, for listening to. Um, our wonderful superintendent and all of my Board of Education members in support of our budget. Yes, we've done a lot of work on it and are very passionate about it. And more importantly, um, our town administrator misspoke. My dear husband is the Chair of CIP. And the minutes from our meeting last Thursday have already been posted to the town's website. Uh, Mr. Dowling, in fact, moved to approve the expenditure of up to sixty thousand for the purchase of a new model year twenty-twenty F five fifty. Dump truck, blah, da, blah, da, blah, there was no color mentioned, and Mr. Serisly seconded it. Thank you very much.
That I apologize, I misspoke.
Thanks Shannon. Val? You're good, okay, thank you again, great job. Jenny Morrell?
Yes, um, before I get to my comment, I wanted to offer the services of my preschoolers if you would like a green truck. Are they willing to paint it for you? They're very good at painting, but, um, I wanted to thank all of you who spoke in support of. Um, the specific classrooms at our school, specifically the preschool, which is the grade where I am teaching, um, it was very. Um, heartwarming to hear all the people who spoke out about the importance of early childhood education. So thank you for that, um, and also seeing the needs. That are different this year and going into next year and realizing that our children are. Likely going to need something different from what we are used to providing them, so thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Dan Foreign?
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, okay, Jerry Kremay?
I want to thank you for offering us the opportunity to comment and, uh, I. I want to thank you for offering us the opportunity to comment and, uh, I hope that we, after you've seen Valerie's presentation, that you will support the Board of Education budget and you'll see how much we really, 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 really went into it. And I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks Jerry. Joanne Hebert?
Thank you Amanda. No, it's gonna be a long budget season. It's been a long day, been a long week of meetings. So I'll save some comments for another time, but of course we all support education. Every, all you teachers work so hard, I work amongst you. I mean, the best thing I, I see every day is priceless, actually, no dollars. It's the care and love that all the teachers and staff give to every child that's, you know, within their care. So that's one thing we don't have to pay for, so, you know, I support too, just looking for ways to keep the expenses down for living in town. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thanks, Joanne. Okay, Amy Knox? Carrie? Gilbert?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks. And last but not least, Brian Briggs?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm currently a teacher at, uh, in Tallinn at a primary school. And I thought what Valerie said was great. Um, everything she said was spot on with class sizes, especially during COVID, and I really think that, uh, the board should definitely, um, accept the budget that she presented, um, and that the Board of Education put forward. So I think she did a really good job and everything she said was spot on. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right.
I guess unless John wants to comment, so.
Thank you. No, I think it was all said. I appreciate, uh, the diligence of the Board of Finance. Um, and your, you know, thorough questioning. And I'm sure that Val will get back to you with any answers to, to questions that are left open from tonight. But, uh, thank you all for, for being part of the process.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're all set, Amanda. Looks like for everybody, um, that brings us to our final agenda item, which is number thirteen, lucky thirteen adjournment. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Eric, you don't have that choice. Nice, nice try though.
I will, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Louise, uh, was motioning to adjourn tonight's meeting. Looks like Rob is seconding, you're mute Rob, but.
I am muted, sorry, I seconded.
Signals is, uh, is your second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Hearing none, what a surprise. The motion passes seven to nothing. Thank you, everybody, for your assistance and help. Uh, it is gonna be a long season and, uh, thanks for staying with us. Uh, lots of work to be done, lots of work already been done. Appreciate it. Take care, everybody.
Thanks Mark, as usual.